All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner S. Seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Sorry, I didn't hear you. Commissioner Esposito? Is Eric, I see you. Can you hear me?
I don't think so.
No. Okay, we'll get a, we'll get a majority. Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
All right, and I mean, yes, we are reconvene. With that, let's hold on a second because the court reporter is having video issues.
Sir, someone's going, sir has got something going on too. I don't know.
Can you hear me?
Now we can't.
Either way, we're reconvene. We're just waiting to confirm that the court reporters' video is working. Yeah, it sounds like she's signing back in, back in. I guess I'll just note while we're waiting for her that we are going to be attempting to be as efficient as possible in the second part of the day because we have fallen behind what would normally be considered behind on a day where we just have a lot left remaining. So that is mostly a note for lawyers.
You're the umpire. Keep moving along.
I'm also a lawyer, which sounds like-
That's true, too. We got it, too. That's, that is true.
Hi, this is the court reporter. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Are you all good?
Yeah, as long as you can hear me. My video is not working for some reason, but that's okay.
Okay, okay, perfect. So long as that's good with you, let's jump right back into 140, 144-21-S, which I believe that all that remains is getting Kareem on the record.
Right, again, Chairman Nick Fatikas for the record. Kareem, are you on?
Oh, yeah.
Chairman, do you want to swear in, Mr. Witness?
Yeah, so Kareem, you're sworn in. We just needed you on the record for this matter. So counselor, unless you have any questions for Kareem, I, you know, I think we're fine here.
Just Kareem, you prepared the written report for this case?
Did.
If you were asked questions or could continue to testify, the statements that you would provide would be consistent with the statements and conclusions in your written report. Is that right?
That's right. I would, and they are.
Chairman, that concludes our case. If you have any questions, our team's still available to answer them now.
Great. I think, you know, I think we're good on questions. We gave the board final time, so let's move right along.
So, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you. On to the next matter. We're going to go to 145-21-Z, and this is at 1012-24 West Randolph Avenue. I believe that Emily Fiori is counselor, so Emily, let me know when you're present.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman and the board, members of the board. My name is Emily Fiori. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ackerman LLP with offices located at 71 South Wacker Drive. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, L31020 Randolph LLC, in connection with its application for a variation for the property located at 1016 to 1024 West Randolph and 147 to 155 North Carpenter Street. For the record, we would like to amend the address of the property that was listed on the application from 1012 to 1016 was inadvertently incorrectly listed. So again, the correct address is 1016 to 1024 West Randolph and 147 to 155 North Carpenter Street.
Great, thank you. We'll get that handled on our side.
Thank you very much. The requested variance is to eliminate the one required 10-foot by 25-foot loading berth for a proposed six-story building with ground floor retail and office use above. The property is located on the corner of Randolph and Carpenter Street in the Fulton Market Historic District in a DX-5 zoning district near a variety of retail and office buildings. We previously met with the alderman and the community for this particular project when the zoning district, when the zoning district was amended and received positive comments regarding the proposal, and the project has not changed since that time. Present with me this morning, or this afternoon, excuse me, are Ms. Whitney Robinette, a principal of PUR Management, doing business as L3 Capital, the developer of the property and is, who is representing the applicant, and Ms. Gillian Agdern of Hartshorn Plunkert Architecture, the architecture record for the property.
Yeah, maybe we get them sworn on and then ask any questions that are substantive to what we might not know, or else we'll swear them to their affidavits.
Okay, I think we can just swear them in, and then I just want to get one or two things on the record, and then we can move forward.
Absolutely. So if you call them, that would be helpful to me, and then I'll just swear them in.
Fantastic. At this time, we'd like to call Ms. Robinette.
Hello. Hi, Ms. Robinette. Will you please state your name and address?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Whitney Robinette. I reside at 1927 West Potomac Avenue, Apartment 1W, Chicago, Illinois 60622.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Robinette. Could you, again, explain your association with applicant for this property?
Yes, I represent ownership of the property and are doing business as legal names. Our legal name is PUR Management, but we do business as L3 Capital.
Thank you. And previously, we've submitted a variety of exhibits and affidavits associated with this particular property. I would just like to bring your attention to the types of tenants that you'd like to bring into this property at this time.
Yes, we anticipate a small shop, soft good retail on the ground level, and then boutique office above.
Thank you very much. And because of those types of, those types of tenants, the need for a loading zone is very low. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Thank you. If you were called to testify further, would you testify in accordance with the affidavit that you provided to this body?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no other questions for Ms. Robinette. And so if the board would like to have a question, Ms. Robinette, otherwise I can call my second witness.
Go right ahead and call the second witness, and we'll take questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Agdern.
Hi, my name is Gillian Agdern. I'm an associate principal at Hartshorn Plunkert Architecture, located at 232 North Carpenter in Chicago, 60607, and I am a registered architect in the state of Illinois.
Thank you. And Ms. Agdern, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Agdern. Are you familiar with the subject property located at 1016 to 1024 West Randolph and 147 to 155 North Carpenter Street?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Would you mind going through some of the issues associated with the loading zone on this property from your perspective as an architect?
Certainly. The loading zone is off of a 10-foot alley, or the proposed loading zone would be off of a 10-foot alley due to the constraints of the Fulton Market design guidelines and where we can locate alleys, loading zones off of the right-of-way. In addition, the alley is 10 feet wide, currently interrupted by two utility poles and is used by the neighboring buildings for trash. Pulling a 10-by-25-foot loading bay into the building also makes it an economic hardship, which Ms. Robinette can speak to about the amount of floor area that will be required for a loading truck to even try to make the turn.
And we submitted an exhibit E previously, I think it was, I believe it was last Friday, which actually showed the path of a truck to try and enter into the loading zone off of the alley, which has now been pulled up. So I just wanted to call that to the board's attention. Jillian, did you have any further comments related to this exhibit?
No, unless there are questions.
Okay. My final question is, you're aware of the affidavit that you submitted to the board. If you testified today, would your testimony be in accordance with the affidavit that you provided?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, that concludes our case, and we are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, one quick question, just so we're clear. So in the real, the retail soft goods, what, will you explain what all that entails, what type of goods will be coming in and out?
Sure. We have not leased the property yet because we haven't built the property, but typically in this district, you know, the tenants tend to be restaurants, which are not soft goods, or soft goods like the Madewell or Uncommon James, things like that. So apparel is probably the likely candidate here. We don't anticipate restaurant use.
Yeah, okay, so that makes sense. And so when there's a, I don't know, a big shipment being dropped off of some sort of inventory, explain to me how, how would we handle this to not cause congestion in a pretty busy area?
Sure. The property abuts a 10-foot public alley, and so similar to the buildings adjacent to us on this block that do include a mix of restaurant and apparel users, our deliveries, we would expect to occur in the alley.
Okay. Okay, other questions from the board? Thank you, everyone. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Yeah, thank you, counselor, for showing people what a substantive, quick putting on of the facts looks like. I appreciate it.
Happy to. Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to calendar number 146-21-Z and 147-21-Z. This is at 2655 West Maple Avenue.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board.
Good morning. Is this Sabrina, Counselor?
Yes, it is.
Great, great.
I'm sorry. Didn't realize that was still on.
There, I see you, I see you now. Okay, perfect. Counselor, you can go right ahead.
My name is Sabrina Harrell. I'm with Logic Legal. We're located at 77 West Washington in Chicago. I represent the applicant, who is also the owner of 2655 West Maple. This is a vacant lot pursuant to a prior demolition in 2013 of a townhome that, as you can see in the photograph, that's connected to those other two townhomes there. The vacant lot is 19 foot six by Y by 100 feet deep. So that's pretty substandard for, it's about 1,100 feet, 1,100 square feet below the standard Chicago city lot. Now, because the property is sandwiched between these, these, these two, these row houses that was demolished, if my client had obtained the property in 2014, then he probably would not be in this situation because the law allowed a year after the demolition, after the demolition to pretty much build back like kind without having to comply with the setbacks. But because my client did not acquire the property until 2018, we therefore have to comply with the current codes.
Sorry to interrupt you, Counselor. Is your client here? Because if so-
No. The architect should be here. Mr. Leskif, are you on?
Um, so Counselor, is there a way for you to get your client here? Because we need them here for, for standing. We require that applicants are here.
I'm sure. Give me a second to call. But Mr. Leskif, can you confirm if you're on?
Chairman, I don't see Mr. Alaska or Leader Architect.
Okay, give me a second, please.
Yep. Hey, Counselor. Counselor Harrell, if you're here, let me know.
Yes, I'm here, but I'm making phone calls.
Yeah, so let's circle back. I'm going to go to the next matter, and then we'll come back to you. Make sure when your client gets on, they stay on until we call you. We'll call you up next, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to matter 148-21-Z. And this is at 30, 3653 West Berry Avenue. So Counselor Kupiec or Agnes, let me know when you're on.
I'm on, Mr. Chairman. They just, they just promoted me.
Great, thank you.
Don't know if the video, if the video is working, but if you can hear me, I, I'm happy to proceed.
I can see you, too. So we're all good. Is your applicant here, Counselor?
Oh, I certainly hope so. Marius, are you on the call? Marius, Pogio?
I see Marius. Marius, if you unmute.
Also, we have an architect, Anjay Kapshinsky, too.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah. We can. Is this Marius?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Marius, will you state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hello, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Marius Cosio, and the address is 2359 Oak Tree Lane, Park Ridge, Illinois 60068.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. All right, Counselor, jumped ahead on that, but I'll let you take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And very simply, this property at Lawndale and Berry is an irregular, irregular lot. Has a frontage of 79 feet on Berry, 66 feet on Lawndale, 133 along the north-south alley, 105 feet along this, the diagonal alley. And my point is that the square footage of this parcel, besides being irregular, the square footage is 7,902 square feet. The plan is to build an eight-dwelling unit residential building, which requires 8,000 square feet. So the applicant has 99% of the floor area required for this eight-unit building, and we filed a variation for that extra 1%. I would like to point out that this property has been before the board, before asking for the same relief, different applicant, but same relief, exact same numbers, and the board granted the variation in that case with calendar number 311-06-Z. So with that, I'd like to call my first witness is Marius. Marius, state, say it again, your name and address for me.
Marius Cosio, 2359 Oak Tree Lane, Park Ridge, Illinois 60068.
And Marius, are you a member manager of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
True that your LLC owns the subject property?
Yes.
Am I correct? This is an irregular parcel, as I described it?
That's correct.
Also correct, your plan is to build an eight-unit residential building?
Yes.
And Marius, did you sign an affidavit that we filed on your behalf?
Yes, I did.
And if I were to quiz you, Marius, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
That's all I have of Marius.
Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Do you want to move to the architect, Mark?
Sure. Anjay Kapshinsky.
Hi, my name is Andy Kapshinsky, and I'm a licensed architect for that, and my address is 705 Devon Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings? Sorry, Mr. Kapshinsky, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Good. Andy, is it true that this, this parcel, this site is irregular, as I described it?
Correct.
Also true that it has approximately 7,902 square feet?
Yes, that's correct.
The applicant's plan is for an eight-unit building?
Yes.
In the zoning district, eight units would require 8,000 square feet of lot area.
Right, yes.
Also true that he has 99% of the lot area required?
Yes.
And we're asking for a variation for that extra 1%.
That's correct.
Andy, you signed an affidavit that we had filed on your behalf in this case?
Yes, I did. Yes.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Hey, any questions from the board? I've got none on this one either. So thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, we're going to circle back to Counselor Harrell on 146 to see if we found our applicant.
Hi, Chairman. No, I'm sorry, we're still making phone calls. The, the architects, we are talking to someone in the architect's office, and they're unsure as to where Mr. Leskif is, and they said that he's, he is the only one that can actually testify.
Okay, um, that's okay. I'll keep circling back to you, Counselor. And, you know, so long as we can track them down, we'll, we'll get you on. The applicant is very important to you, so just make sure that the applicant will be on the call as well.
Okay. And can we just raise our hand in the chat when we have everyone?
That would be great. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move then to calendar number 151-21-S at 2215-17 West Chicago Avenue. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand an existing first-floor residential use down to the basement and to infill building light wells within an existing three-story 12-dwelling unit building with basement, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December 20th, 2020, prepared by Hannah Architects." Mark, so I think this is back to Mark Kupiec.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Mark Kupiec.
Perfect.
Mark Kupiec, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I have with me on this case, the case involving 2215-17 West Chicago Avenue. I have on behalf of the applicant, Russ Shayuk. Also have John Hannah of Hannah Architects, and also Joe Ryan as our expert witness. And just briefly, this is an existing old residential building, which happens to be located on Chicago Avenue in a commercial district. It's an existing building that has residential on the first floor, and the improvement here is merely to extend these first four units into the basement, making them duplex units. So the unit count remains the same, and to be honest, the front elevation of the building looks very similar. So not a, not a big relief that we're asking for. So first witness would be Russ. Russ, are you on?
Hello, everyone. I'm here.
Good, Russ. Would you please state your name and your address?
Russia York, 6853 Ellis Drive, Long Grove, Illinois 60047.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. This is the court reporter. So could you repeat that address?
6853 Ellis, Long Grove, Illinois.
Thank you, Russ. And Russ, if you could, this will be short, but please be slowly so the court reporter can pick it up.
Yeah, good, good point, Mark. And Mr. Shayuk, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Russ, are you a, is it true you are a member manager of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
Also, also true that your LLC owns the subject property?
Yes.
Also true that the subject property is already improved with an old residential building?
Yes.
And this building has residential on the first floor?
Yes.
And all you're doing is extending those first four units into the basement, making them duplex units?
Yes.
And the number of apartments will remain the same?
Yes.
Russ, is it true you signed an affidavit that we filed on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
If I continue to question you, you would answer consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
That's all I have of Russ. Thank you. If no questions, John Hannah?
And John, I don't think we've seen you today. So will you state your name and address for the record?
Hoping that he's on.
This is John Hannah.
Yep, great, we got you.
Was that answer, was that for me?
Will you state your name and address?
Okay, I'm sorry. John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., 180 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois, Licensed Architect, State of Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
John, is it true that this property is presently developed with an old residential building?
Oh, that is true.
Already has residential on the first floor?
That's correct.
All you're doing is duplexing those first-floor units down into the basement?
That is correct.
The number of units will remain the same?
That is also correct.
And I'm guessing that the front elevation will actually also not look much different than what it does right now?
That's true.
John, you signed an affidavit that we filed on your behalf in this case?
I did.
And if I continue to question you, you testify consistent with that affidavit?
I would.
That's all I have of John?
Perfect. If you want to move to Joe, we've got, we've got Joe on the record this morning.
Joe Ryan? Joe, are you there? I'm sorry, Joe?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Good job. Name and address?
Joseph IMAI, President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Yep, thanks, Joe, and you're all sworn in.
Good. And Joe, did you prepare, do you prepare a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
Your credentials are in that report?
They are.
Joe, in your opinion, does this special use comply with all applicable standards of the ordinance?
Yes.
Also true, this special use will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of- Also true, this special use will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
None whatsoever.
And again, it's an existing residential building?
That has first-floor residential use, yes.
And actually expanding the size of these units could be said to be in the interest of public convenience, given the demand for larger units at the present time?
That is correct.
If I continue to question you, your answers would be consistent with the report that we filed on your behalf?
Yes.
Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you, everyone, we'll take this under consideration. Okay, um, so I don't see a hand up yet related to one forty-six and one forty-seven, so I'm gonna continue down, um, down the list. One fifty-two dash twenty-one dash Z. And, and, Mark, is this you as well?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
So it's correct that we will be taking these with one fifty-three to one fifty-six, correct?
Well, um, Mr. Chairman, actually, the one fifty-two is a little bit different because that's the, uh, the vision of the original zoning lot. And then one fifty-three, four, five, six have to do with the, uh, the new development project to redo this convent.
Are your, just this question, are your witnesses the same on each one?
No.
Okay, then let's do one fifty-two and then we'll move on to the batch.
I, I think, I think that's better, it'll be more clear for your record.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I am Mark Kupiec, I'm the attorney for the applicant. And I have, or I hope I have on the call, on behalf of the applicant, Eric Wolin. And also Adam Architect, Adam Levy of Papa George Hames Architects. And also Joe Ryan as an expert witness. Um, and on this particular case, first thing I'd like to do, a little housekeeping matter in the, on the agenda itself, in the first line, about the application for a variation to reduce the north side setback. Actually, that north is a typo, should, should read south. It was correct in the denial, it was filed with south, so I think it's just a typo.
Yeah.
It's the south side setback from the required five feet to two-point-five feet.
Yeah, we, we hear that, we, um, it was just a typo, so we discussed correcting it.
Good, I just wanted to bring it out so that the, the resolution would be accurate. And with that, I would just like briefly say, um, that, uh, this particular, this particular case is, uh, with respect to the division of the original zoning lot. And very simply, we've got two principal buildings. Forty-six forty-one North Ashland is the, uh, the old school building and the longtime site of Our Lady of Lourdes Catholic School, which is a private Catholic school, operated for many years and educated many children during that time. That's the school building forty-six forty-one. Uh, there's also a second building, forty-six thirty-seven North Ashland. Uh, during many of the years that the school is open, they had the good fortune to have an order of nuns that taught in the school. And forty-six thirty-seven North Ashland was used as a convent for lodging for the nuns that, uh, were affiliated with the school. Uh, that said, uh, since that time, that school is now closed. And the Archdiocese has had an offer to purchase the convent property. One of the unique circumstances is that there is no alley and no alley access behind the property. There is a garage behind the convent, but historically that was accessed through a driveway with an entrance and an exit on Ashland. So when the buyer made his offer to purchase the convent, it was contingent about including the driveway with the sale of the convent property. Uh, so that was not the problem and that wasn't included, the driveway in the convent sale. However, the other unique feature is the location of the school building in relation to the driveway right next to each other. So that when the driveway was included in the sale of the convent property, there was just physically not enough land left over to provide the required side setback for the school building. So, uh, after a recent zoning review, the, the city was of the opinion that these variations were needed so that this would be a proper division of the improved zoning lot and that's why we're here today. So, uh, Eric, do we have Eric on the call?
Uh, I'm here if you can hear me.
Yes, wonderful.
Thanks.
Eric, would you state your name and address?
Sure, Eric Wolin, uh, with the Archdiocese of Chicago. Eight thirty-five North Rush Street, uh, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one one.
And Eric, uh, and Eric, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Uh, I do.
Thank you.
Good. And Eric, would you explain what's your position in the Archdiocese?
So I am, uh, the Chief Capital Assets Officer for the Archdiocese of Chicago. So I see all real estate-related matters on behalf of the Archdiocese.
All right, very good. Uh, so Eric, uh, was I correct in stating that the building at forty-six forty-one is the old site of Our Lady of Lourdes Catholic School?
Uh, you are correct.
And this was operated for many years as a private Catholic school?
Uh, yes.
Educated many, many children during that period of time?
Uh, it did.
And during many of those years, you did have the benefit of an order of Catholic nuns who taught in the school?
Uh, correct.
And there is a second building, was a second building on the zoning lot, forty-six thirty-seven North Ashland. And that was the old convent that provided housing for that order of nuns?
Uh, it did.
Uh, since that time, that school is now closed?
Uh, yes.
And they're roughly accurate that last year or thereabouts, you received an offer to, uh, purchase the convent building?
Uh, correct.
And that offer was contingent on you including the driveway with the convent building?
Uh, yes.
Also true that there is no alley and is no alley access?
Uh, that's correct.
There is a garage behind the convent, but historically that was accessed through this driveway, which has the entrance and exit on Ashland.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
So a reasonable request that the driveway be included with the convent building?
Yes.
Our unique circumstance is the location of the school building in relation to, to the driveway, which is right next to it.
Uh, yes, it is.
So after the driveway is included with the sale of the convent property, there's just physically not enough land left over to provide a five-foot setback on the south side of the school building?
Uh, yes, correct.
Good. And Eric, with that, and you were advised recently that the, the city's opinion was that these variations are necessary so that the division of the zoning lot would comply with the city code?
Yes, I was.
And you had signed an affidavit that we had prepared on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I continue to quiz you, you would answer consistent with that affidavit?
I would.
Good. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have of, uh, Eric. I, uh, do I have Adam Levy on the call?
Yes, I am.
Good, Adam. Adam, would you state your name and your address?
Adam Levy, uh, architect for Papa George Hames, uh, six forty North LaSalle, uh, Suite four hundred in Chicago.
Good.
And Adam, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And Adam, uh, you heard Eric's testimony and would, and would you agree that with the driveway being included with the convent property, there is physically not enough land left over to provide a five-foot south setback for the school building?
Correct.
And, uh, Adam, referring to the agenda in the, uh, the write-up from the department, uh, the department's also asking us to, uh, to do a variation for the rear setback of the school building. Now, it is true that the school building has a zero rear setback, is that true?
That's correct.
But the school building is an old, very old building, correct?
Correct.
And this zero, uh, rear setback for the school building was an existing condition that predated the division of the zoning lot?
Correct.
Another unique feature is the east, east lot line of this property is slightly irregular.
That is correct.
And because of that irregularity, actually, the north side setback of the school building also does not comply with the current setback requirement.
That is correct.
And again, that was an existing condition that predated the division of this zoning lot.
Absolutely.
However, we are asking for a variation for all those setback requirements so that the school building will be in compliance with all the bulk requirements.
Correct.
Good. And Adam, you signed an affidavit in connection with, uh, this case today?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to quiz you, you testify consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, I would.
And that's all I have of Adam? I do have Joe Ryan for a couple of quick questions.
Yep, go right ahead.
Joe Ryan, state your name, your address?
Uh, Joseph Ryan, President of LaSalle Appraisal Group, ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you prepared a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I have.
And you're familiar with the subject property and the surrounding property?
Yes.
Joe, in your opinion, is it true that the granting of this variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property in the neighborhood?
No, it will not be.
Also true, the, this variation will not substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood?
No, not at all.
And if I continue to quiz, quiz you, you would testify consistent with your report?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Unless, questions?
Any questions from the board? And just the, I, I guess one question of clarification, the property is already sold, right?
The cabinet prop, the convent property was sold to a buyer, correct?
Got it, okay. Um, sounds like no questions from the board, so we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Yep. And I want to go right into, um, the next few cases because they're directly related. Um, so this, uh, if Counselor Harrell's on the line, um, about the previous matter we're circling back to, um, I'm gonna come to that after this. So, Mark, if we can please address one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-five, and one fifty-six, twenty-one Z.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
And for, for the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Kupiec, I'm the attorney for the applicant. And I have with me on this case, on behalf of the applicant, Larry Niam. Also, again, Adam Levy of Papa George Hames and also Joe Ryan. And on this one, we do have the four cases, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-five, and one fifty-six. And they are all related with the same, same witnesses, they're just four different items of relief, so we have four separate denials. But on this one, on this one, very simply, with the division of the improved zoning lot, Larry now has his own project to reuse and convert the old convent building. So, again, he's subject to some of these same unique circumstances that we've already referred to. No alley, no alley access. Driveway onto Ashland. And probably his most unique, uh, circumstance is the fact that his plan is to reuse and convert the old convent building to a residential building with fourteen dwelling units. So that unique circumstance has caused some particular difficulties on behalf of the architect, trying to comply with the current code, with all the current requirements. So with that said, I would, um, first call Larry as my first witness, Larry Nian, Larry, are you on?
I am, sir.
Good. Larry, would you please state, state your name and your address?
Larry Niam, forty-six thirteen North Winchester in Chicago.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Niam, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Mark, you still there? Let's give him a second, I think, oh, uh, maybe he, I think he's signing off and back in, let's see. Oh, I see you.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, uh, I got lost for a second there, I apologize, thank you. Uh, did we, uh, did we swear, Larry, in?
Yep, he's sworn in.
Okay, I missed that, I, my internet cut out for a second there. All right, Larry, is it true that you are a member manager of the applicant LLC?
Yes.
Also true that your LLC now owns the subject property and we're talking about the convent property?
Yes, it does.
Larry, also true, as I mentioned, there are some unique fea- features, one being the fact that there is no alley and no alley access?
Correct.
Also, you've got this existing driveway on Ashland that you would propose to use for your access to parking at the rear of the convent?
Yes, sir.
And perhaps maybe your, uh, primary unique feature in that your plan is to reuse and convert this old convent building to a residential building containing fourteen apartments?
That is correct.
And Larry, with that said, did you sign an affidavit that we filed on your behalf in this case?
I did.
And if I were to continue to quiz you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Good. Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's all I have of Larry, I'd like to, uh, let Adam go into more detail on some of the variations that we're requesting.
Okay, great.
Adam, are you there?
I sure am.
Okay, Adam, would you state your name, your address, and your affiliation?
Adam Levy, uh, architect for Papa George Hames, six forty North LaSalle, Suite four hundred, Chicago.
Okay, and you are the project architect?
Correct, Licensed Architect in Illinois.
Good. And Adam, uh, am I correct, the, our unique features include the lack of an alley and no alley access?
That is correct.
The, you've got to deal with an existing driveway located where it is?
Correct.
And also, uh, deal with the existing convent with the particular location on the subject site?
Correct, it's critical to, to save the building structure and its current shape and form.
Very good. So Adam, also true with this hour four district, uh, Larry is allowed fourteen dwelling units as of right?
That is correct.
So we're not asking for any relief there. Also entitled to a one-point-two FAR.
That is correct.
And we are within that one-point-two FAR?
Yes.
But the, uh, the variations come in and how you utilize that FAR and locate the dwelling units?
Correct.
Our first case, we're asking for a variation to reduce the rear setback from forty-eight feet to thirty-eight feet. Larry, is it true that the existing convent building is, oh, strike that, only has a thirty-eight-foot rear setback?
Yes.
Good. So part of the, uh, a part of the plan, part of the remodeling is to add a partial fourth-floor addition to the existing convent building?
Correct.
Also true that part of that fourth-floor addition will extend to the rear wall of the existing convent building?
Correct.
So the setback for that fourth-floor addition is also thirty-eight feet, just like the convent?
Correct.
So we need a variation for that rear setback for the fourth-floor addition?
Correct.
Uh, our second case, uh, one fifty-four, again, involves this partial fourth-floor addition. And again, your commission is made difficult by the location of the convent building where it's located. So one of the solutions is to add this fourth-floor addition, is that correct?
That is correct.
But to be able to add this fourth-floor addition, we need a variation for the height?
That is correct.
We're asking to go from thirty-eight to forty-one point seventy-five, is that correct?
That's correct, within, within ten percent of the original required height.
Within ten percent, and the board has the discretion within ten percent?
Correct.
And Adam, if that, the variation is granted, how will our height compare with the building, the adjacent building on either side?
Uh, it's still lower than, than either side.
Good. So we will be compatible with the other buildings on the block?
Correct.
Good. So our third case, uh, case one fifty-five, uh, involves the rear yard open space. Uh, again, because of the location of the convent building on the lot, uh, in your opinion, there is not enough room or not enough space at the rear of the property for both parking and rear yard open space requirement?
That's correct, the, the current code is, is derived from, uh, having alley access from the rear, uh, so that uh, becomes slightly impossible with this particular property.
Good. So as a result, our third case, we're asking to excuse our required rear yard open space being located our required rear yard open space being located in the rear yard.
Correct.
And Adam, could you briefly describe the design features in your proposed building that would address open space for the occupants of the building?
Yeah, so, out of, out of the 14 units, all 14 units have pretty generous exterior space. The upper floor units have terraces over the existing roof. The units facing south take advantage of a 17-foot side yard to create ample patio and balconies. And the units in the rear have overhanging balconies over the, over the parking area. So, every unit has, has ample, ample outdoor space. None of them less than 80 square feet.
Good. And all those features you described are all shown in the plans that were submitted with this application?
That, that's correct, and also in the renderings that are currently on the screen.
Very good, thank you. And the open space you're providing, many cases for the exclusive use of the occupants of the individual units?
Correct, no, no areas are shared, they're all private outdoor space.
So, probably that open space would be more usable for the occupants than some common space in the backyard?
Absolutely.
Good. So, Adam, in our fourth case, 156, is to reduce the onsite accessory parking requirement. We're asking to reduce it from 14 spaces to 11 spaces, is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it true that this building at this location, there is a lot of alternate means of transportation?
That is correct.
A matter of fact, there is a CTA Rapid Transit Red Line Station at Wilson and Broadway to the east?
Correct.
And there's also a CTA Rapid Transit Brown Line Station about 1,800 Montrose to the west?
Correct.
There's also a Metro Station at Ravenswood, the station extending from Lawrence to Leland, slightly to the west?
Correct, and Leland is the first street to the north of this property.
Good. And just to be clear, none of those are close enough to formally qualify for TOD or an automatic parking reduction? So, we need variation.
That's correct, but it is in our four districts, so TODs wouldn't apply to that.
And also, Adam, how many bike parking spaces do you provide in the building?
We have a minimum of 14 bike parking spaces in the building, and potentially, there will be some more.
Yes, and there's also a couple of divvy bike sites in the neighborhood not too far away.
Correct, just down the corner of Ashland and Leland.
Good. So, Adam, in your opinion, then, are there enough alternate means of transportation so that the 11 parking spaces that we provide will be sufficient for this building?
Absolutely.
Good. And Adam, you signed an affidavit in connection with this case that we filed on your behalf?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to quiz you, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have of Adam, we rest on that affidavit unless you had questions?
Nope, I think if you put Joe on really quick.
Yep. Joe Ryan?
I'm here.
Joe, name and address?
Joseph M. Ryan, President of Sale Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Wayne Avenue, Chicago.
And Joe, you did a written report in connection with this case that we filed?
I did.
And you're familiar with the, as you said, the subject property, surrounding property?
Very much so, yes.
And in your opinion, the granting of these variations will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property?
No, not at all.
Also true that these variations, if granted, will not substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood?
No, they're going to renovate and rehabilitate an older building, yes.
Good. And if I continue to question you, your answers would be consistent with your report that's filed with the board?
Yes, they would.
And that's all I have of Joe, we'd rest on his report?
Great, yeah, thank you. And actually, I find it helpful, the walking through of each variation, you don't always get that, so thank you. Any questions from the board?
This is.
No, go ahead, Derek.
Okay, quick question, this is Commissioner Esposito, I have a quick question for the architect related to the design. This is considered a reuse, will any of the building's original materials or fabric be visible off from the exterior, or is all the?
Correct, Derek, we're, we're, we're basically saving everything on the facade, what you see in the renderings that is gray would be an addition and not a replacement of materials. So, all the materials that are presently on the exterior would be refurbished. So, and we've even taken it a little bit further, there's existing doors on the interior that are being refinished, they're the old schoolroom doors, and they'll be used within the apartments with the old transoms, operable transoms above and so forth, and those are being refurbished to be reused in the building as well.
Thank you.
Hi, Jolene Saul. It seems like most of these requests tied to adding the fourth floor, so can you talk about the hardship of not being able to do that?
The, the ability to, to add the fourth floor is tied in part to putting an elevator in the building, the building wouldn't be feasible without doing that. Putting that elevator in allows us more flexibility to add accessible units to the project. So, that was critical to, to that part of it. And the addition to, to really maximize the floor area rather than going out and covering more of the site, we felt it was important to go up, and we felt that we could go up without taking the scale of the building and making it seem much larger, so we've implored this reverse mansard type and setting it back from the facade, so if you look at the lower right rendering, you can see the step back, so it will be, you know, highly diminished from the, from the street while still adding that, that additional floor.
Thanks, and maybe the developer can address the feasibility of the project without the additional floor area?
Larry, are you there?
I am.
Good, could you address that, Larry?
The the alternative analysis we did.
Larry, I'm sorry, before you start, Commissioner, I'd like to point out, as far as additional floor area, the, the, the 1.2 floor area is all permitted in that R4 zoning district, so we're not adding any, we're really just trying to take advantage of what he, the floor area he has as a matter of right.
I'm clear, the architect said, you know, the option was either go up or go out, so I'm asking
Good.
Why are those the only two options?
All right, Larry, go ahead.
Yes, the alternative analysis we did was to assume that we had full compliance. That is, that there were no variances. And that involved this building could not, based upon the advice I received, comply. And would have to take it down and build in the building, which was, as the numbers we've submitted show, economically, just not feasible. I have not run a separate analysis that assumed that we did not elevate the building and include the fourth floor.
Okay, I, yeah, I'll just add, but it sounds like you did not, you just said you didn't do the analysis. It's a little different to ask for variances for an existing building and the existing footprint versus the addition, so that is partly what is driving my question.
Sure. And Commissioner, if I could, I'd just add, I believe that the building, the convent building is setback about 24 feet in the front, which is obviously not room where we could do the addition. He's constrained with the driveway to the north of the building, so he can't do much to the north without interfering with the driveway. Again, we're limited with.
Yeah, that's not really, thank you for that, that's not really answering my question, but I think the answer is the analysis hasn't been done doing something within the existing footprint, so thanks.
Any other questions? All right, sounds like we have enough, so, thank you, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and circle back now to Counselor Harrell on 146-21-Z and 147-21-C. Counselor, I saw your hand up, which makes me think you possibly found the client.
That is correct. Hi, Alan, can you confirm that you're present?
We're gonna need Alan and Pashupati.
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Shreya, are you present?
Hi, I am.
Great.
Everyone's here, I'm sorry for the delay, Chairman.
No, no worries, do, do it for you if I get both of them sworn in, and then you can take it from there?
Yes, please.
Perfect, okay. First, let's go to Ms. Knopf, will you please state your name and address for the record?
So, Pashupati Nath is my father, my name is Shreya Singh, I was also as part of the application.
Okay. Okay, one, one second, Ms. Singh, we're just confirming that this is okay.
But I'm here to represent my father.
Sorry, Ms. Singh, just one second.
No problem.
And Ms. Nath, just to confirm, is your father currently not reachable?
He's not.
Ms. Singh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. He's not reachable at this time right now.
Okay, so we're just trying to, I'm doing some background work. The applicant has to be here. The board allows spouses, and there's a standard of not allowing children.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm trying to find out if there's some work around here.
All right. If you could permit, I can also try to reach my mom, and she could step in for this?
That would be great, yeah, that's, that's a sure thing for us, so.
Okay, just give me a couple minutes here, thank you.
Counselor, Counselor, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's see if we can, within a couple minutes, get an applicant on the line, and just for going forward, when we say applicant, we really need the person on or a spouse. I always try to, I always try to get things on, if you've watched the board before, I do my best to figure out ways to make sure we can hear matters. But there's potential here, if we can't get one of the applicant or his wife on, that we'll be continuing this. Okay, someone is raising their hand, Camo, can we get Nilam Devadi promoted? Nilam, when you, if you could unmute, we've got you as a panelist now.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, I just had to pull over to get online. This is Nilam Devadi, and Pashupati Nath is my husband.
Okay, great, I'm glad, I'm glad we found you, so. With that, and just to confirm, Nilam, are you on, are you untitled, do you share ownership with your husband on things?
Not on this one, but like, you know, I handle everything for him, because he's out in the fields, and I am the one who handles most of the financing or any kind of planning and stuff, I meet with the architect. But, you know, if need be, he can, I can, I don't know if he has Zoom on his cellphone, but I take most of the decisions.
Okay, yeah, and thank you for signing on. And I'm speaking with the lawyers just to make sure that this can go through, because the, I think I assumed that you'd be untitled, but let me just figure out if we can work something out here.
I'll really appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Nath, so just to confirm, you don't share any ownership on this property with your husband?
No, I do not share ownership, because we see, sometimes we buy in his name, sometimes I buy in my name. So, you know, it's not necessary who is on the title, but I am one of the persons who takes care of all the finances, planning, it does not matter who, whose name is on the title, does not matter in my family, you know? And if I say something, he's 100% okay with that.
Yeah, and I hear that, it brings complications to us that are being stressed to me right now. So, here's what, here's what I'm So here's what, here's what I'm gonna do, because we need someone who has some ownership in the property.
I think she's trying to, the daughter is trying to get Mr. Nath now.
Yeah, probably, I don't know how to do it, I'm not that techy, so I'd rather let Shreya get my husband online.
Sure, sure. Okay, good, so one more time, just because we are packed today, I'm gonna circle back, because trust me, I do want to get this on. We really just need the applicant on here, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward and Counselor, if, if, if the applicant can't be reached, not a huge deal, I'll continue all, you all, one month instead of two. But if you, if it sounds good to you, we'll give it another shot.
No, I, I will try to get my husband online, I can run to my office, like, how long will it be before you'll circle back again?
I'll wait for you all to raise your hand again.
Okay, I'm just going to drive to my office, I'm not too far, and maybe I can pull him on with this.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We'll see what we can do, so I, and I know you're.
I really would appreciate.
Yeah, your husband does have the Zoom invite, just so you know, because the applicant receives the Zoom invite.
Okay.
You should have it on hand.
Okay, great. Chairman, this is tech support, just want to remind that people can also dial in using regular phone, they don't have to have the Zoom app.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So Ms. Nath will circle back, just raise your hand when you track him down, but we've gotta.
Okay.
Keep.
All right. Yeah, 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 no, no problem, I'll track him down, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Great, let's move along to calendar number 157-21-S and 158-21-Z. While everyone gets situated, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to convert a portion of the existing ground floor and the entire second story with residential use and the construction of a new third-story residential addition over an existing two-story with basement building for 42 new dwelling units, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated March 29, 2021, prepared by Axios Architects." And Counselor Tom Moore, let us know when you're present.
Here we go. I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Great, yeah, okay, great, Tom.
And hopefully Victor had said you would want the owner, even though he's just a finance person, so he was calling in. His name is Mr. Westfall?
Okay, great, let's see if we've got him on, yep, I see him.
This is Chuck Westfall, I'm here.
Okay, and then we have Victor, the builder, or the, also the manager, and Mr. Ryan.
Perfect, go right ahead.
So, Mr. Westfall, you're mostly a finance person, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
But you went by this old bank building, that massive bank building that goes for a block and it's been empty for many years and you thought it, it would be nice to repurpose and renovate, is that right?
That's correct.
But since you are not a builder, you engaged Victor Yakolovik to be your manager on this and he's the one who knows all the day-to-day and the details, is that right?
He is.
Okay, that's all I would ask of Mr. Westfall. Can we go to Victor Yakolovik?
Yeah, but let's get Mr. Westfall for me. Mr. Westfall, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sure, Charles R. Westfall, address is 3757 West Gulf, Sanibel, Florida.
Great, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
All right, Counselor, go right ahead.
Can we then go to Victor? Yakolovik?
Let's see if he's on.
Is Victor Yakolovik here?
I am on, Tom.
Thank you, so Victor, you've spent your life building buildings, is that right?
That is correct.
And you were engaged by Chuck Westfall to undertake the repurposing of this building, is that right?
That is correct.
And we appeared in front of the board last, almost a, last year and to get a variance to allow, to build a third floor and finish out the second floor with 36 residential units, is that right?
That is correct.
And at that time, we did not engage the first floor, because the hope was to put a ground floor, on the ground floor, which is 20,000 square feet, use half of it for a daycare and the other half of it for a local library, because the local library right now is warehoused at Sire Park and the aldermen and the community would love to see this building, half of this ground floor become the local library, is that right?
That is correct.
And, and the financing isn't in place for that, but everyone is still hopeful that can happen, is that right?
We're holding our finger, cross our fingers.
However, the, the daycare idea fell through with the pandemic and everything and so we're before the board today to ask to allow, have six additional residential units on the other half, the western half of the first floor. And because it's a business district, we need a special use to do that, that's why we're here, is that right?
Yes, we are.
And, and we handled the parking for the 36 units on the second and third floor in a existing parking lot that the bank used to use, two lots away at Oak Park Avenue and North Avenue in the next block, is that right?
That is correct.
But here, we're going to add six spaces, we've cut out six spaces plus another area equal to six spaces in the back of the building that would serve the parking, one each, for each unit, on the first floor or at the back of the first floor of the existing building, is that right?
Yes, it is, correct.
And so in addition to asking the permission to use half of the first floor for the six additional units, we're re-asking the board to waive the commercial loading dock, is that right?
Correct.
The board previously granted that as to the 36 units, since that parking was all off-site, but the zoning department thought, since we're adding six units, that issue should be back in front of the board, even though they previously decided it, is that right?
Yes.
And although six of the spaces will be designated for these six units, there is a space, 6848 feet wide or so, that will effectively avail itself for people moving in and out and it's lined up with the elevators, is that right?
That is correct.
So we can't technically meet the requirements of a commercial, the kind of loading dock that would, you know, handle a semi-truck, but the area we will have will more than handle the kind of flat, the panel trucks that would be moving in and out, people in and out of the units, is that right?
Yes, it is.
So our requests today are both that, to allow the ground floor residential use on the western half of the ground floor and to wa, again waive the loading dock. That's what we're here before the board for, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I went through all the criteria necessary for this board to grant this relief and if you were, and you assigned a witness affidavit, if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
Absolutely.
Is Joe Ryan here?
He is.
Mr. Ryan, you testified on this exact same case a year ago, is that right?
Yes.
And you were asked again to look at whether or not, and in that case, you were looking at whether or not a special use should be granted to meet the parking requirement for the 36 units on the second and third floor, is that right?
That's correct.
And now you are before the unit, before the board, asking if it would be proper and meet all the criteria for a special use to allow the six units to be on the west half of the ground floor, is that right?
Yes.
And you investigated that, made a report and determined that it would meet all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief and that it would have no detrimental effect on the surrounding properties, is that right?
That is correct.
And you, I sent you and you have seen, there is a commercial and residential group that is dedicated to the revitalization of the area from Austin Avenue to Harlem Avenue, particularly on the Chicago side and they are suggesting and overwhelmingly supporting this concept, is that right?
Yes.
And that building needs to be renovated. Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief, both of these gentlemen are available for questions, I should also say that there was a community process and this residential and commercial group also supported and we've had no objectors that we know of on, on these new requests.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Tom, and one quick question that came to mind, you started talking about there was a space for moving, for people moving in and out within the first floor of the building. What is this space, is this like a separate elevator or?
So, oh, I'm sorry, we also have, is Mr., is the architect Bill Koleis?
Yes, I'm here.
And I'm sorry, I forgot about you, I'm very sorry. So we are only required to have six spaces, first of all, this is a massive bank building and there's lots of hardships and problems in renovating it into a residential building, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, and I can explain if, Victor, if you can go to the west side of the plan, there's an overhead door with a ramp on the northern part behind space, let me try to zoom in. Let me look at my plan.
Western, western spot.
Yes, that's a ramp, that's an, that's for, for garbage, exactly, for garbage collection and for, it's a ramp. It goes up, we have about 12 feet, it goes from 10 feet to 12 feet in height, so it doesn't really qualify for an actual loading berth. But that's to take out trash, that's for people to move in and out, you can actually put a car, a truck in there, a smaller truck for move-ins.
Okay, good, good, so effectively, it kind of, it's, it's not technically loading berth, but it, it has a similar purpose.
Correct.
Okay, great, any questions from the board?
So sorry, this is the court reporter, I don't believe the last two witnesses were sworn in, I just wanted to put that out there.
So we have, did I miss one, because I know that Bill Kopeleis is sworn in, and sorry Katie, because that was earlier today.
I wasn't.
I'm sworn in all day, Chairman.
Yeah, I know, this is like in perpetuity sworn in.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure Victor Yakolovik was sworn in.
Okay, perfect, sorry about that, Victor, so Victor, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Victor, V I K T O R, last name is Yakolovich, J A K O V L J E V I C, 1400 Park River Forest, Illinois.
So you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Perfect, Katie, thanks for that heads up. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration, thank you everybody for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Harrell, on matter number 146, you got your hand raised and I just want to give one more shot at, at this or else we're gonna continue. So Counselor, whenever you're here, let us know.
Yes, I'm here, may I ask that the, the number that the owner is on, he's on the line, it ends in 9613, can he be granted admittance?
Yeah, yeah, Camo, do you see that it's a 630?
Yes, he's able to talk, he's unmuted.
Okay, and can Alan Lescas, can you confirm that you're still present?
I see, I see Alan Lescas. You might be unmuted and he's waving, yeah, I think we're, we're good. Okay, great, Counselor, you know, sometimes it takes a second, but I'm glad to get it on, so feel free, we've got a kind of intro to your case, so feel free to streamline it, but take it from here.
Okay, wonderful, sorry for, for the delays. So once again, my name is Sabrina Harrell of Logic Legal, representing the applicant, who is also the owner of 2655 West Maple. The property is a vacant lot that's sandwiched between two town, sandwiched between a row of townhomes. The, it's a substandard lot, 19 feet 6 inches wide by 100 feet deep, giving a, a square footage that's over 1,100 square feet, smaller than a standard Chicago city lot, which has created the need for these two variance requests. The first bearing is to reduce the rear yard setback and the second variance is a request to reduce the east side setback from two feet to zero feet. Okay, the, may I ask that Alan Lescas, the architect, is sworn in?
Yeah, perfect, yeah, Mr. Lescas, would you please state your name and address?
Alan Lescas, licensed architect in Illinois, 1701 South First Avenue, Maywood.
And you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes.
Mr. Lescas, can you confirm that you are the architect for 2655 West Maple?
Yes, I do.
And that you proposed construction of a two-story single-family residence?
Yes.
And that you have previously provided your affidavit to the board of your findings and conclusions as they relate to the two variance requests?
Yes.
And that the testimony you provide today will be consistent with your affidavits?
Yes.
And just to streamline this, your, your affidavits, finding and conclusions, is that under no circumstance can the owner meet both the rear yard setback requirement and the parking, the parking requirement because of the substandard lot size, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that the owner will also be unable to meet the building code and with regards to the size of rooms required because of the substandard lot, is that correct?
Yes, because all houses like 15 feet, it's tiny house, so that's, that we have to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lescas, Mr. Nath, are you?
Hi, yes.
Hi, can Mr. Nath be sworn in, please?
Yeah, Mr. Nath, will you please state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Pasupati Nath and the address is 2655 West Maple, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I was just gonna say, if you could, could, could give your residence address, this is the address of the property you just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 26 Hickory Drive.
Right now, because it looks like a lot, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, 26 Hickory Drive, Oak Brook, Illinois, 60523. I'm sorry, 26 Hickory Drive, Oak Brook, Illinois, 60523.
Perfect. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Okay. Mr. Na, you're the owner of 2655 West Maple in Chicago, Illinois, is that correct?
Yes.
And that you seek to build a two-story, single-family residence on the land, is that correct? And that you have hired Mr. Lescus to help you to meet, to provide a sufficient design for you to build on the property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Lescus has informed you that you did need the two variances in order to be able to build a single-family residence on the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you are, if these two variances are not granted, you will be unable to build on the property any structure, is that correct?
Yes.
We have no further questions, but Mr. Lescus is here, and Mr. Na is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great, thank you. And just to confirm, looking at the renderings, so is there no garage?
No, just parking spots.
It's like a parking spot in back somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if you look on the site plan, it will show you the two, the concrete pads in the rear.
Okay, great. And does the depth of the home, does it align with the neighbors?
This house is a little bit longer, but from the right, it's like townhomes. So, it's a really tiny, really tiny, really narrow house, 15 feet 1 inch, so we cannot do shorter anyway.
Yeah, how much would you say it sticks out as opposed to the neighbors?
Like 20 feet.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one correction. The zoning variance pursuant to the zoning denial letters state that it would be a 6-foot iron fence and 5-foot-high foot width wood fence. I believe that's incorrect. I believe that the drawings show that the iron fence is 5 feet and the wood fence are 6 feet.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. That should work for our standards. We view above 6 feet with a bit of suspicion, but totally fine here. So thanks, thank you for that correction. Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your work in getting this one on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving along to calendar numbers 159-21-Z and 160-21-Z. And this is into a long string of Counselor Moore. I know you've probably
You guys are gonna get very sick of me today, I'm sorry.
We won't if you streamline and make them quick, because I know
I will absolutely do it.
Great.
So on this one, I'm looking for, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, M O R E. I'm looking for Mark Sutherland, who is my owner, and his architect, Brian Milbury.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Mark as well.
And I'm here as well.
Great. So, Mark, you saw this lot at 1162 North Milwaukee that's been vacant for 20 years, is that right?
Correct.
And you heard that the city was, had a policy encouraging density near the near L-lines, and this is just a couple hundred feet from the Damon Blue Line, is that right?
The Division and Ashland Blue Line stop, actually.
Okay, and this lot has some interesting, Milwaukee is a slanted street and head and starts out as a slanted street before it, and then it curves right at the back of the lot and cuts off a piece of the block, and then meets Milwaukee perpendicular, is that right?
Correct.
And also, you, there's an old building next door that has a fire escape that encroaches about 4 feet onto your property, is that right?
That is correct.
And zoning looks at that, since it's been there forever, that becomes your, where you run your side setback from, is that right?
Correct.
And so you went through a community process and worked with the alderman's office, and you came up with, incidentally, you have to have, in this district, you have to have enhanced affordable requirement in your building, is that right?
Correct, it's in the pilot, the ARO pilot area on Milwaukee Avenue, and we're doing 15% or 2 out of 14.
Okay. So you ended up with eight units, eight one-bedroom units and six efficiencies, is that right?
That is correct.
And you are also doing several public things, like you're doing a public bike rack, and you're redoing the parkway, and you're adding trees and grates, is that right?
That is correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variances you're requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, with those, with that affidavit, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Brian Milbury, are you there?
Yes, I am.
So, you've been the architect on this from the beginning?
Let's get Brian sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Brian, will you state your name and address?
Yep, Brian Milbury, Milbury Architects, 1806 West Diversey Parkway, Chicago, 60614, licensed architect in Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And so you've been involved in this from the beginning, is that right?
Yes.
And this was a TOD type 1, so there was no parking required because of its proximity to the blue line, is that right?
Yeah, we're 488 feet.
Okay, and this otherwise, other than these variances we're requesting, meets all of the standards of the zoning code, is that right?
Yes, it does.
And you and I went through a affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the relief requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. Both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, sorry, again, this is the court reporter. I don't think Mr. Sutherland was sworn in.
Yeah, I think you're right, Katie. You're catching me off the game, and I appreciate it, because it's been a long day, and I'm preparing for a much longer one. So, Mr. Sutherland, let's let's pretend like we're doing this from the beginning, but will you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Mark Sutherland, 1517 West Haddon, Chicago, 60642.
And you swear or affirm that you told the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. No questions from the board, is that correct? Then we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, next up, 161-21-F, and I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand the health club by 9,270 square feet in an existing one-story commercial building, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Fairly Inc., and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April 14, 2021, prepared by Owen Davis.
So, again, Mr. Chairman, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Hopefully, I have Darcy Leslie and Joe Ryan here. Is Darcy here?
I see her. Do you see her?
Yes, I'm here, yes.
Great.
Darcy, did, Mr. Chairman, would you like to swear, Darcy?
Yes. Yeah, Ms. Leslie, will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Darcy Leslie, 6453 North New Guard, Chicago, Illinois, 60626.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Perfect.
Darcy is a younger person. You were an athlete, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you decided to make your advocation, your vocation, by starting a health health club, like a weightlifting club and a fitness club, is that right?
Yes.
And you've been operating in this particular location for how long?
Since 2012.
And, but it's an old industrial building, and because it's, because of its zoning, there is space available next to it, but we need a special use to be able to use that space, because you're already at your limit in terms of space in the, under the existing zoning, is that right?
Yes.
And so we're here today asking the board to allow you to expand into this, the rest, the other part of this building that was laying there unused.
That's correct.
Okay, and you and I drafted an affidavit where you went through, you addressed each of the questions necessary for the board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Is Joe Ryan here? No, Joe Ryan, he was here.
Chairman, he dropped off. He's back.
There he is. Joe Ryan?
Oh, Joe, you're just muted. There we go.
Sorry.
Joe Ryan, you, at my request, you did a report looking at the request for a special use at 1834 West Balmoral, was that right?
That's correct.
And you, in that report, you opine that this application meets all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief, and that it will not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding properties, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that report, is that right?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief, and both, all, both witnesses are available for questions.
Great. Yeah, Ms. Leslie, I just have a few back-up questions. So, was the expansion somewhat related to increased demand at the gym?
Yes, it was. We have a, we were already pretty tight in space to begin with before COVID, and now that people are feeling more comfortable in coming back, we are needing a lot more space. And we've rolled out a kids' fit class, and we need space for the kids as well, so we're just trying to give fitness to everyone, and we just need space to do so.
That's great. And has it, what has COVID protocols been like for the gym? What have you guys been doing?
We have had a really good protocol. We taped out squares for each athlete, so right now there's 15 squares in the main room, so the athletes will go to their square. There's cleaning solution, hand sanitizer, rags. I feel like we clean so much more now than we did before, which is great, and it's definitely a protocol we're gonna keep moving forward. So, yeah, I think we did a really, we actually installed a really big fan, too, to get more airflow and flow into the gym, so that's been helpful as well.
That's great. Okay, any questions from the board? Sounds like none. Ms. Leslie, I'm a crossfitter, so I
Come to the gym!
I like trying out
Love to have you.
And also seeing all the different cleaning protocols right now are super interesting to me.
Definitely stop by.
Absolutely. Okay, well, good luck, and we'll take this under consideration.
Okay.
All right, thanks, everybody. Okay, next up, we're gonna go to calendar number 162-21-Z.
No. So, Mr. Chairman, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore, M O R E. Hopefully, we have Jennifer and/or Jeb Wilson, and their architect, Mark Anderson.
We're here, Tom.
Okay.
Hey, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, would you want to swear them in?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Jennifer and Jeb, if each of you could separately just state your name and address, and I'll individually swear you in.
Sure, Jennifer Wilson, 1932 North Cedric Street.
Great. And Ms. Wilson, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Perfect. And Jeb, if you could state your name and address?
Jeb Wilson, 1932 North Cedric Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60614.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect.
So I never want to choose between whether the husband or the wife should be the speaker, so you tell me which of you would like?
Let her.
So Jennifer, you and your husband were living in Old Town for the last many years, is that right?
Correct.
And you've been looking for a house to kind of make, make your stand, to raise your family and live for the foreseeable future, is that right?
That is correct.
And you found this orange-rated home a few days, it's actually a two-flat, I think, historically, a few blocks north of where you were living, and you hired Mr. Anderson to help you renovate it, and part of that was to expand the kitchen area and put a little addition on the back, is that right?
Yes.
And you went to the Lincoln Central Community Organization and presented your plans to them, is that right?
Correct.
And they asked you to get the acquiescence of the neighbors on either side, and you did that, is that right?
Yes, from both sides.
And also, they sent, and the neighbors sent all of those letters to the alderman, and she supported you as well, is that right?
That's correct.
And this is not done for money, this is just to make this a more livable house, is that right?
That's correct. It's an 1800s brownstone, so those of you who are familiar with the structure, you know, it's like a very formal, small, like living room, dining room, and then there's a large kitchen, but you know, the way that modern families live, like us, we want to be able to have our family really live on this main floor with a family room off the kitchen.
Okay, and so you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the the criteria necessary for the board to grant the relief you're requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
Is Mark Anderson on the?
I'm here.
Mark, you're a licensed architect, is that right?
I am.
And you designed this?
And real quick, Tom, I don't think we've gotten Mark on today, so I'm gonna swear him in. Mark, will you state your name and address, please?
Mark Anderson, 333 West Hubbard, Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And so, Mark, you have designed this addition on the back in such a way as to conform with all the ordinances and laws of the city, is that right?
Correct.
And basically, you're just following the same wall lines that were already established by the older building, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with the affidavit that you and I worked out to address each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief requested, is that right?
It's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. All of, all three people are available for questions, should anyone have any?
Yeah, any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. I understand, I guess, the inconvenience, but I'm not quite understanding the hardship involved here, if you could elaborate on that.
Mark? Whoever, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just Yeah, it, it's just the inconvenience is there's no real living space, no comfort space on the first floor, so, you know, just from a, you know, trying to take an older home and create modern amenities, you know, you would typically see kind of a blend between the kitchen and the, and the living room, and so what we're trying to do is alleviate that and bring it up to a standard that was consistent with, you know, other homes that we had looked at and, you know, really make this our forever home for our family and, you know, create unity and make it a better living space altogether.
And in addition, right now, our family room resides on the second floor and, you know, we're looking to have children and children going up and down staircases is just kind of dangerous, so we want to make sure that, you know, we can stay together as a family unit on, I mean, like, living floor.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, I think, you know, it's a, it's an orange rated, 100-plus-year-old building, I, you know, the, anytime you're renovating that, that in itself is a hardship, is a recognized hardship, usually.
Wait, could you repeat that, please?
That it's an orange rated 120-year-old building and that, that is, in it of itself is a hardship, as opposed to, the rules are made to build a building today in 2021, so anytime you're renovating a 120-year-old, you know, building that you can't knock down, I believe that is a hardship that this board has traditionally recognized.
I, I would disagree with characterizing it as a hardship, an orange rated building automatically being a hardship.
Not automatically, but.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you, everyone, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep, thanks. So moving on now, we're going to go to 163-21-Z.
Mr. Chairman, the next four cases are, are all identical. Once we withdraw one case, number 16621Z, and all of them have listed each other as their witnesses, and they have the common architect, for efficiency, I think if we were allowed them all in, one of them has been the organizer and could give the overview, and you could swear them all, and I think it would make the whole thing go much faster than doing four separate cases.
Yes, that's a great idea, so, Tom, just to be clear, so 166 is being withdrawn?
Yes, because, as you will, as we will explain, we revised the plan at the last minute, and that, that was the only case that had an existing built-up yard that, that we're no longer asking for variance on that.
Yeah, great, yeah, I remember, that one was slightly different, so that cuts off some of my questions, so I'd like you to take it from here and we're going to take 163, 164, and 165.
So I think, to give an overview, and then we could swear each of the individual units in, but I think if we had Phil Gold and the architect, and I asked them the general questions that are applicable to all of them, we could then just go through each of the, swear in each of the witnesses, and we would, we could do all four cases pretty efficiently. So, Mr. Gold, will you tell the chairman who you are and tell him your address and let him swear you in?
Sure, my name is Philip Gold, I'm at 2139 West Cortland, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
Thank you, Mr. Gold, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
So, on the screen now is a picture of four buildings, and you own one of them, is that right?
That's correct.
And but your four neighbors all share backyards, and right now you have older garages that would not support a garage roof deck, is that right?
That's correct, they're all old stick-frame pitch-proof garages.
And each of these lots is a 100-foot lot, is that right?
That's correct.
And each of these, so your plan is to have new garages across the back where you will have party walls between them, and basically, you're, the net effect is each lot is going to, you're asking for a variance to allow the open space to be moved to the garage roof deck, so you're basically going to double the available open space or play space for you and your kids on all four lots, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and because you have 100-foot lot, and because each new garage has to be two feet off the alley, there is only 17 feet between the existing houses and where the garage has to go to have a minimum space that, in the garage that will fit a car, is that right?
That's correct.
So the requirement is that the open space be 15 by 15, and since you only have 17 feet, the requirement on the, what we're, we've been calling the Hopkins Amendment, requires a four-foot stair parallel to the garage, so mathematically, it just doesn't work, is that right? You, you have to be two feet into that 15 feet, is that right?
That's correct, the stair encroaches between the, basically between 15 and 13 feet, which own, which, we're about two feet short of our open yard rear space requirement.
So if the board grants this and allows you to move the compliant open space from the ground to the garage foot, to the garage roof deck, you will have a 15 by 13 open space outside the back of each house, and then you'll have almost double that up on the garage roof deck, is that right?
That's correct.
And you looked at other plans, but you decided to have a compliant staircase that is parallel to the garage wall, is that right?
That's correct.
And each of these has the exact same size lot, exact same problems, except the one where we've withdrawn it, they have a little bit higher house, so they're going to have to have a different stair arrangement in the back of there to get down to the ground, is that right?
That's right.
And with regard to your house, you and I, that's 2135, you and I worked out a statement where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, that's for 2139, yes.
2139, I'm sorry, and so also then, could we have the architect Jeremiah Johnson? Is Jeremiah here?
Yep, I think, I think Mr. Johnson's muted, yep.
Yes, this is Jeremiah Johnson, Chicago Building Design, 770 North LaSalle, Suite 801, Chicago, Illinois 60654. The licensed architect in the state of Illinois.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Johnson, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great.
So you heard the testimony I just went through with Mr. Gold, is that right?
I did.
And it turns out he's an architect as well, is that right?
That's correct.
But you're the architect of record, and you're the ones who filed these plans and will pursue a permit, is that right?
That's correct as well.
He's, his capacity is own homeowner and organizer of the four families, is that right?
That's correct.
But consistent with what he said, the request here is to technically move the open space to the garage roof deck with a compliance stair because there's no room, if you have the compliance stair, to technically meet the 15 by 15 open space requirement, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And that's created by the 100-foot lot and the necessity of putting the garage two feet off the back lot, and the size of garage has to be to fit a car, is that right?
That's correct.
So it's math, and that creates a hardship in designing this, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you went through all the criteria necessary for this board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
I would.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think if we just go now through each of the owners and swear them, then everyone would be available for questions.
Yeah, Tom, I think a good way to do this is to, yes, where I'm doing it very quickly and note any differences, any material differences between the variation being asked for of the lot, anything like that.
That's right. So who, who, who would, who should we do first? Case by case?
Yeah, let's just go.
163, so is Ed Bucher?
Yep, I'm on, Ed Booker, 2135 West Cortland, Chicago 60647.
Thanks, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And Mr. Booker, you and your family live at that address and own that property, is that right?
Yeah, I own the property solely, and my partner and I lived there with my dog.
Very well, and you heard the testimony of Phil Gold, there is no difference between your property and his property in terms of size or the plan or anything, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I did work out an affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Absolutely.
Then is Jennifer or Aaron Burns here? Let's see, that would be
Aaron's on, can you hear me?
Yeah, so Aaron, you live at 2137 West Cortland, is that right?
That's correct, I live at 2137 West Cortland, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
And who lives there with you?
My wife Jennifer and my two children, Vivian and Oliver.
And Mr. Burns, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thanks.
And Mr. Burns, if you were, you and I, well, your property is the same dimensions and the plan is the same as Mr. Gold described a little while ago, is that right?
That's correct, there's no difference in the plans.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the affidavit that you and I filed in this case, addressing each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the relief you're requesting, is that right?
I would.
Okay. And we already have heard from Mr. Gold. Briefly, Mr. Gold, your address is 2139 West Cortland, is that right?
That's correct.
And who do you live there with?
I live there with my wife Julia and my three daughters, Lucy, Mara, and Nora.
And you and I worked out an affidavit, and you would testify consistently with that affidavit that addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief, is that right?
That's right.
And do we have Amy or Dan Nardi?
We're here.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to swear in, Mr. and Mrs. Nardi?
Yep, absolutely, so, Mr. and Mrs. Nardi, if each of you could, if each of you are, if you're both going to speak, we'll swear you both in. But if only one of you is, whomever can state their name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Dan Nardi, 2141 West Cortland Street, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Nardi, you heard Phil Gold describe the, the problems and the relief requested and the plans to address those problems a little while ago, did you?
I did.
And your property is the same, except that the landing on the first floor is a little bit different, is that right?
That is correct.
But the relief being requested here, the size of the lot is the same, and the relief being requested here is the same, is that right?
That is exactly right.
And as a matter of fact, you may have heard, we, the chairman and I discussed, we withdrew your separate, you were the only one who had a separate variance request to have a different size backyard porch, or, anyway, you've, we've withdrawn that, is that right?
That is correct.
So now yours is the same as everybody else's, is that right?
That is correct.
So, and if you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, I would.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's the four cases, and you have all of the owners, and you have the architect, and any of them are available for questions.
Yeah, Counselor, will you remind me, I know you gave us the dimensions of like the true rear yard open space, I'm using the word true, just meaning not the, the open space that'll potentially be on the roof, but permeable ground.
I'm sorry, who, who would you like to hear from?
Anybody, just that permeable ground open space behind the house. How, someone threw out the dimensions, and I'm just trying to remember what it was.
So for each house, I think it's maybe within a couple inches of each other, but we have roughly 13 to 13 and a half feet north to south, and then the full width of the lot.
Okay, great, so what we would consider the like, and I understand that this is like a Hopkins-esque stair, I'm, I'm, I'm taking a lot of, I'm bending some words a little bit, but it's because it goes that way behind the garage, and the connection between the patio and that stair, just a few, it's not very, a couple yards, would you say?
Right, so our revised plan does show that our rear exit would go onto a landing, step down to natural grade, and then we would, we would then walk and access that stair up into our garage or up to our garage roof deck.
Okay, great, questions from the board? Okay, we're going to take this under consideration, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Enjoy the weekend.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, Tom, we've got another string. Do one more before a break, coming up on two hours since lunch. So the string of cases, that is 16821Z, 16921Z, 170, and 17121Z on Haddon Avenue.
Yes, so my name for the record is Tom Moore, M-O-R-E, and we should have Natalia Mancher and her architect Sergey Sanofnov. Have Natalia here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Sergey, did you make it also?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Natalia, would you tell the board, the chairman, who you are and your address?
Yes, my name is Natalia Mancher, and address 2544 West Haddon Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60622.
Great, and Natalia, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
So Natalia, where, where, where were you born?
I was born in Ukraine.
Okay, and how long, how long have you been in this country?
And 15 years.
And you and your husband have been working those 15 years, but you've been renters and you had not yet been able to buy a house, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And you have an adult daughter and you have a teenage son, is that right?
Yes, correct.
So you found this little three-flat that's on a very small lot, 80 by So you found this little three flat that's on a very small lot, eighty by, um, eighty by twenty-four, and you thought it would be perfect for your family, uh, because you'd love to have your daughter in one apartment and rent out one apartment and have you and your husband live in the other apartment, is that right?
Yes.
And it's even, even someday, maybe your son would live in the third apartment, but for the time being, it'd be helpful to be able to rent one out for taxes and mortgage, is that right?
Yes, correct.
But, but this, as Sergey can explain, uh, this house, um, is, um, over a hundred and twenty years old and it's, uh, um, it was a mess, is that right?
Uh, yes, in fact, uh, it needs, uh, God rehab pretty much, uh, once, um, we opened up some walls to see how the framing is, um, and the plumbing pipes, um, they're in a pretty poor shape. Uh, I literally fell through the first floor, like a ground floor, uh, that was, um, kind of rotten, empty up. So it is in need of repairs.
Okay, Sergey, I'm going to come to you in a minute, but I was, I was just kind of doing that, uh, to explain what Natalia is asking the board and why, why there are so many requests here. Um, so Natalia, anyway, uh, the apartments are very small, they're seven hundred and something square feet, is that right?
Yes.
And one of our requests to the board is to allow us, uh, the fifteen percent, so they could be eight hundred and something square feet, is that right?
Yes.
And that's because right now they're like little, little, um, a kitchen, like a little closet, and you want to have a kitchen that you could live in, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
And so that's, we're renovating the back and adding a few square feet for that and also to have a utility room, is that right?
Yes, we would like to.
Okay, and, uh, you and I went through all the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief we're requesting, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yeah.
And you're not doing this, you're not, um, an entrepreneur who's trying to flip this, you're doing this to live in it, uh, for the foreseeable future, is that right?
Yes.
And so the requests you're making are to make this, uh, old, uh, decrepit building livable again, is that right?
Yes.
And so now, uh, Mr. Chairman, could you please swear, Sergey?
Yep, Mr. Safinov, will you state your name and address, please?
My name is Sergey Safinov, um, I'm, um, at one seven five zero Charles Drive in Willing, Illinois.
Great, and you swear, perfect. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, Sergey, uh, Na- Natalia, um, asked you to help her, uh, make this building more livable so that she and she, her family could, uh, live in it, is that right?
That's correct.
Will you tell the board a little bit about the problems you faced in doing that?
Uh, well, the, the floors are very small by today's standard, um, they barely could fit, uh, two very small bedrooms. The kitchen was non-existent, it was just, uh, a few cabinets along the wall in the middle of family room in essence. So we tried to remodel it, at least to give them, if, um, not fully sized, but livable bedrooms in, in a new footprint. So we had to push out the back and absorb that, um, enclosed area in the back that included, um, second set of stairs. And we also pushed it slightly out farther. If you can see on that demo, on elevation, uh, there is a very small area between the garage and, and the addition. So we absorbed some of it. Um, also because we are rebuilding the garage, we were asked to push the garage back by two feet because it was considered to be a new, new garage, so we, we, in essence, uh, you know, lost a little bit of the lot, you know, that we had before.
And, and the lot is only eighty feet deep, which is, uh, a more than forty percent less than a standard lot, is that right?
That's correct.
It's also thin or it's only twenty-four feet wide.
Yes.
So right now there's twenty-two hundred and eight, um, square feet F A R, and one of our requests is let us go to eight hundred and twenty, a little, uh, just, um, not even two hundred square feet more, is that right?
Yes.
Sorry, the twenty-four, eighty-four, uh, so each unit would get less than a hundred feet, is that right?
Yes, it's eighty something square feet, yes.
Okay, and, uh, you and I, uh, went through, uh, an affidavit and addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief. And if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief and both Natalia and Sergey are available for questions.
Great, yeah, um, Tom, could you do us a favor and like really just kind of concisely walk through each variation and tell us, um, what each in particular is for?
Oh, um, Sergey, um, the first variation is we're asking for the fifteen percent as we just described to add, uh, a little over two hundred and something feet, is that right?
Yes, to add the kitchen in the back in essence.
Okay, and the first one relates to the addition?
Yes, it does relate to the addition, that the increase on F A R and the hardship is due to lot being much shorter than standard Chicago lot.
Okay, and then, um, we're asking to reduce the rear setback, uh, to, from twenty-four to five, and can you explain why we need that?
Um, in that we, in essence, we end up with, um, having sort of attached garage just because we ran out of space between the garage and the house, um, in order to add that small kitchen in the back. Um, we had to connect to, to the new rebuilt garage, uh, that would remain, you know, as one story, you know, regular garage. There, there is no addition above the garage in essence, except for second set of stairs. Um, so due to that fact, um, our setback, uh, changed.
Okay, and, um, then there, there is absolutely no place on the lot to put, um, the rear yard open space, is that right?
Yeah, there, there was no rear yard open space that would comply with today's, um, requirements. So we, we would suggest to put it on top of the garage in essence, to have a deck and have that as an open space.
And, you know, this, this building is from a hundred and thirty years ago, so, um, the rear yard open space is a requirement in the last ten or fifteen years, is that right?
That's correct.
So, um, that creates a hardship for, that you got to put it someplace, the only place you could put it is on the garage roof deck, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and then, uh, we're all, finally, we're asking to, um, to, uh, reduce the number of parking spaces, uh, this is always been a three unit, is that clear?
Yes.
Sergey, is it clear that?
Yes, that, that, uh, yes, that was, um, three unit dwelling, we, we have confirmation from Zonin in that regards.
And, and so there's only always been two parking spaces there, is that right?
That's correct, so we're not decreasing any with our, you, construction, it's, uh, it remains the same.
But in order to have a garage, uh, you can't build it in a twenty-four foot space because each, uh, twenty-four foot lot because, uh, and have three spaces because they each require eight and the walls of the garage require some too, is what, that right?
Correct, plus you would want to, to have a walk on the side as well.
So that's why, uh, we're asking to waive the one parking space that has never been there, even though it's been a three flat, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and how, of course, how is the roof deck, like in what way is the roof deck attached to the house? Is it just via one bridge or?
Um, it is via one short wall, if you look at the foundation plan that right now displayed on the screen, number four. Um, there is a small section between the foundation of the garage and utility room on the first floor. So that's, that's the only connection between, between the house and, and that garage in essence.
Ah, got it. Good. Oh, and one other thing, I know you mentioned, um, ADA compliance, is that required with this?
Uh, could you repeat that?
I, I think there was a mention of the building being A, ADA compliant.
Um, initially, we, we wanted to have, um, accessible unit on the first floor. Um, there is exception in the zoning, um, ordinance where in that case, the, the ground floor would not, uh, be counted in F A R. So we tried to avoid the F A R, uh, variance by doing that. Um, unfortunately, um, it requires ADA, you know, space for parking, so, and we couldn't possibly accommodate that. So, uh, we dropped the idea of going this, um, accessible unit. I mean, it still can be rented as accessible unit, but we are not necessarily asking for to, to, for accessible unit due to parking situation again.
Okay, um, questions from the board?
Hi, yes, this is Jolene Saul. Can you walk us through how you access the roof deck?
So from the upper floor, from the third floor in essence, um, you, you go down onto garage deck. Um, the, the other drawings perhaps would be a little more helpful if you want to bring it to the screen. Um, so, yeah, on the, so this, the third floor plan, you can see the straight stair going on the roof deck and then, um, you would walks to, uh, if you look at the plan number one, second floor, you'd walk through the garage deck onto the, uh, stair that leads you to grade. And the, the reason we did that because it was, um, was very difficult to accommodate any other type of stair, um, due to the distance from third floor to, to the deck of the garage. It, it just kind of becomes kind of long and it's difficult to accommodate in any other way on that small lot, which is twenty-four foot lot, uh, twenty-four foot wide lot. So you go down onto the garage deck and then you come down to the grade from that.
Okay. Thanks. We don't have elevations, right?
Uh, I believe you, um, I believe you, you should, um. Do we have elevations?
Okay. Any other, any other questions from the board?
Uh, no, it would be difficult to see on my screen.
It's okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone. We will take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the time. And, you know, with this, we've picked it up a little bit, which is helpful. Um, we've got a, a good amount left to go, so let's call a recess, um, fifteen minute recess until four forty-five PM Central Standard, um, so for this recess, Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Salt?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great, see everyone at four forty-five, thanks. All right, I know that we reconvene in this, um, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Salt, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Wonderful, we are back. Um, let's keep with it, um, crank through some more. So next up is 172-21-Z at 1910 West Wabanzia. Tell them to roll out a snow when you're back.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you're not too tired of me yet, I, I am back, uh, with some more cases.
Tom, I'm the only one people get tired of. I'm literally on this whole time. Don't worry about that.
Well, thank you. Hopefully, on this case, I have Jeff Suzuki and Martin Kim, his architect.
Jeff Suzuki is here.
Martin Kim is here.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing in Mr. Suzuki?
Yeah, Mr. Suzuki, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Suzuki, 1910 West Wabanzia, Chicago, Illinois 60622.
Thanks, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So Jeff, um, you were looking for a home to raise your family in the Bucktown area, and you found this old, um, factory that had, uh, the previous owner before you had turned it into a single-family home, is that right?
Uh, it had been a single-family home previously, but it, it, yes, it is a former factory.
Okay, and it, um, did not have any parking, and the building goes all the way to, to within about five feet of the back alley, is that right?
That is correct.
And so your plan, uh, is to add the five feet, hollow out the, um, another 15 feet or so of the back, uh, first floor to make a garage, is that right?
That is correct.
And also, you're going to, um, build up the parapets a little bit so that you can have a garage roof deck. Is that, I'm sorry, a, um, a roof deck on top of your house, is that right?
Uh, that is correct.
So, um, and also, it's a very small lot, it's an 80 by 24 lot, is that right?
Correct.
So, and it's, um, more than 100 years old, and so that, those are the problems that, um, you were confronted with in, and why you had to ask for these variances.
Correct.
And so, uh, you hired an architect, and you've come up with the plan before the board, and you and I worked out in a affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the relief, relief you've requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you testified consistently with it, is that right?
That is correct.
Um, then I would also ask for, uh, Martin Kim, is he with us?
Yes, Martin Kim is here.
Mr. Kim, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And, um, you undertook, uh, the, the renovation of a single-family home and the addition of a, of a, uh, garage in the back and, um, a parapet wall to accommodate a, uh, a roof deck over the house, is that right?
Yes.
And because it's an 80 by 24 lot, and because it's, um, a old factory, that created some hardships that you had to overcome in your design, is that right?
Correct.
And, um, you and I worked out an affidavit, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief. Um, both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
And so, and, and just to clarify, so I'm getting the view right, um, there's being a garage added in that extra space that you mentioned at the beginning, but there's not a garage roof deck, it's really just a home roof deck.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm so used to garage roof decks that the words came out wrong. Uh, the, the garage will, um, just, uh, complete the, the ground floor there, I believe. Um, actually, can we ask the architect, is you extending the five feet on the second floor as well?
Yes, so, we're extending the five feet on the ground floor, and then the roof of the new five-foot addition would become an open balcony that's accessible from the rear, uh, bedroom. Uh, there's an existing doorway on the second floor to that.
But, but that five feet will not go all the way to the, uh, top, the, the top?
Yeah, it does not go up to the second floor roof.
And the reason you need the parapet is to, to have a roof deck on the building itself, the existing building itself?
Uh, the parapet, the reason for the parapet modification is to, there's an existing, uh, roof access penthouse that, that does not meet the new code. So we are modifying the parapet walls so that the existing penthouse stair access would comply with the current code.
And, and you're just following the existing walls, uh, that were set 100 and whatever years ago, is that right?
Correct.
So again, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's the essence of the case.
Okay, so just to get a good visual, so, um, normal, like, one-story garage shoots out, we've got a balcony on top of the garage coming out from, um, a bedroom or something up there. Is there a stairway from the roof on top of the garage or the patio on the garage to the home's roof deck? Are they, do they connect in any way?
No, the, the balcony above the, the new addition is not connected to the existing, uh, second-floor roof deck.
Okay.
The only access is through that existing penthouse, uh, from the second, inside the second floor up to the penthouse.
Yep, it's the only access to the roof, the only access to the, uh, balcony above the first-floor addition is from the, uh, second floor, second floor itself, right?
Yes, there's a, currently, there's a door that does not lead to anything. If, if you go back to the, uh, rear of the building photograph, it shows that.
Oh, a photograph, yeah. So, so at one time, this, when this was a factory, they probably had to have a, a fire escape or something.
Okay, um, cool. Um, other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, this is the court reporter. Um, I wasn't sure if Mr. Kim was sworn in before, but he wasn't sworn.
Yeah, I was not sworn in.
Hey, I don't know what I'd do without you today. I clearly, like, not on the swearing-in process. Mr. Kim, will you state your name and address for the record?
Martin Kim, licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Address is 2444 West 16th Street, Chicago, Illinois 60608.
And do you swear affirm that you've told the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. I think third time's the charm, I won't mess that up again, not. Um, any, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay, now, moving to a string of matters. Call number numbers 173, 174, and 175 21Z at, uh, 1317 West Carmen.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Tom Moore. Hopefully, we have, uh, Jimmy Ronan and his architect, um, Mr. Seda.
Hello.
Yeah, there he is.
Yeah.
Would you, Mr. Chairman, would you mind, uh, swearing Mr. Ronan in?
Yep, Mr. Ronan, um, state your name and address.
Uh, my name is, uh, James Ronan, at 3101 North Kessy, Chicago, Illinois 6068.
And do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great.
So, uh, Mr. Roman, you, um, build new buildings, but whenever you can, you like to take an older building and kind of save and redo it, is that right?
That's correct, Jeff.
And this particular building, um, caught your eye because it has, uh, kind of a classic, um, turn of the last century look to it, uh, to the facade, and it has kind of a New Orleans, um, balconies on, on the balconies on, on the, I'm sorry, the front facade is kind of a classic look to it, and then the side has kind of New Orleans-esque balconies. Is that right?
That's correct, Jeff.
And, but you can tell it's 130 or more years old because it has a a stone foundation. Is that right?
That's correct, Jeff.
And so the existing building is built a foot into a side yard and several feet into the rear yard, and that's because it was built way before there were side yard or rear yard setbacks. Is that right?
That's correct, Jeff.
And in order to, it's a existing five-unit, and in order to make it work, you're asking the board to allow you to put, to add a floor, to add a unit on the top, following the same walls as are existing. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the building on either side has, are both a floor higher, so this one would fit right in with that. Is that right?
That's right, Jeff.
And you're following the exact same wall lines that are already there.
That's correct, Jeff.
And so you're you hired the architecture firm to make the plan that would meet all, you know, meet all of the zoning requirements if you are able to get these variances. Is that right?
That's right, Jeff.
Okay, and you and I went through all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variances you're requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
That is correct, Jeff.
And then, do I have Mr. Seda?
Yes, I'm here.
And you're a licensed architect, are you, sir?
I, I am not licensed. I work in, I work in partnership with Victor.
And Victor.
Red Architects.
So Victor signed the art, and you're, you're his associate who worked under his direction. Is that right?
Yes, correct. He couldn't make it today.
Okay, and you did, however, file an affidavit with the, he had filed one, and then we had you file one when we found out he was unavailable.
We'll, we'll go ahead and swear in. So will you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, Angel Seda, 3913 West 57th Place, Chicago, Illinois, 60629.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
And Mr. Seda, you've worked on this project with your boss from the very beginning. Is that right?
Correct.
And because of the, the lot is 40 feet across, usually a six-flat would have 50 feet. Is that right?
Correct.
Most, most six-flats have the 50-foot or 48-foot lot in front, and so we end up with a few, we have 90% of what we need to have the sixth unit, but the zoning code allows where you otherwise have the criteria necessary to have a unit. If you have 90%, it allows this board to grant the additional unit. Is that right?
Yes.
And that's to level the playing field where the only thing missing is the few square feet necessary for the extra unit. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're also asking for a half a foot on the side yard, and that's because we're following the existing walls. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And we're also asking for a reduction in the rear setback, and that's because the building is already there, and we're following the existing walls. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, the only thing we're adding in the rear yard is we're, you're bringing the New Orleans-esque balconies around from the side to the back to give the people who will live in those apartments, open space. Is that right?
Yes.
So, and there still will be some open space between those balconies and the parking, but it doesn't comply with the require, the current requirements for open space. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And that's because the open space requirements have been made in the last few years, and this building was built long, long before that. Is that right?
Yes.
I think that, that's the, those are the problems you had and the relief we're requesting. Is that right?
Correct.
And you and I went through an affidavit and addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief you're requesting, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that's our case in chief, and both of these gentlemen are available for questions.
Great, yeah, can we get a little bit on the economic analysis here? With or without the variations?
So Jim Ronan, can you tell the board? You could, you could have just knocked this building and built a five-unit as of right. Is that right?
That is correct, Jeff.
But as we said originally, you, you like the challenge of trying to modernize and renovate a building, especially if it has some character.
Yes, yeah, we, we, me and my brothers maintained some buildings, and we put them in our portfolio, and we really like this one to keep the character after building, and we, obviously, we love working in Chicago, and we'd like to stay here, you know?
Okay, so, but the chairman's question is, you filled out a reasonable return analysis. If you can't have these variances, what would your return be? And if you do get these variances, would your return be reasonable?
Yeah, I feel like my returns have been reasonable on the, with the, with the variances, and if I don't get the variances, we're at a negative cash flow on both the sales, if we went to sell, or even on the rentals, if we went to rent the properties.
Okay, do you have any specifics on what those numbers might look like? We didn't have a return analysis attached to our findings of fact, so just want to dig a bit deeper.
Yeah, so we're looking at about, like, if we were, we paid 950,000 for the, for the property, and construction costs are based around 1.1 million, and that was, that's a moving target today because construction cash seemed to keep, have gone up probably 10 to 15% already this year. And we had done this earlier on, when we'd done our performa, and we'd be looking at, like, a token sales at 2.550 if we went to condos with the variance, so we'd be looking at a profit right around 350,000 on the project. And if, without the variance, the numbers really are pretty much the same, and because we're allowed to build the same square footage, we would be looking at 950,000 again for the land, and 1.1 in construction costs, but we'd be selling one less unit, so our sales would be 2.150, so we'd be at a negative at $50,000 loss on the project.
And Mr. Chairman, just, we did, I don't know whose fault or inadvertence why the board's copy didn't have the analysis, but we did get a copy of it over to Victor when we were made aware that, that they did not have one.
Okay.
I have a, this is Jolene Saul, just a question for clarification. Are you saying a construction cost would be the same with or without the third-story addition?
Yeah, yeah, this, no, we're, we're allowed to have the third floor if we get our side yards, and so the square footage would be still the same on the construction, yes.
We're still allowed. Well, you need a variation to get the third floor, right?
Correct, I need the variations to get the third floor. I do.
Oh, I'm not sure. Well, Timmy, you can, I don't know if that really addresses the question of comparing with or without the very, the variances.
So, so Jim, I'm not, the commissioners I think is saying that you didn't answer the question, or is that?
Sorry. Can you repeat?
Yeah, that is what I'm saying. Um, I, I believe the question was, what is the economic analysis with the variations and without? And the third floor requires a variation, so if you give a scenario with the third floor, you assume at least one variation, so that doesn't really answer
Right.
question.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. All right, yeah, well, then, we, if we don't get the third floor, well, then that would reduce this, our sales, because we're still basing our sales on the square footage. So yes, our construction costs would be less if we don't get the third floor, but we're also selling less square footage, so our sales numbers would come down off that, off that, off the third floor.
Do you have a rough estimate of, I guess, basically, the cost of the third floor?
The cost of the third floor is probably, because we'd take off the trusses there and everything, we're probably, that third floor on its own is probably right around 450,000, 500,000 construction cars.
And then, sorry if you said this, what are the estimated sales prices?
So the estimated sales prices right now would be 2.2 with the variance.
Per unit?
2.2 total for all six units.
Yeah, I'm asking per unit.
That per unit, we're averaging.
Sorry, I don't feel like, I but you should.
But we'd be selling, I'd be selling more, I base my sales up square footage, so if I don't get the third floor, obviously, I'm selling.
So one floor-ish.
Yeah, our sales, it would be a lot less. It'd be probably like $600,000 less. Six to 700 less.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jolene. Other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, venturing back into world special uses, we're going 176-21-S at 4907 West Fort Worth, and I'm going to quick read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon.
My name for the record is Tom Moore, and hopefully, we have Lisette Garcia.
Look, I see Ms. Garcia on.
Hello.
There she is. So, Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing Ms. Garcia?
Yeah, Ms. Garcia, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Lisette Garcia, and my address is 1718 North Pison, Chicago, Illinois, 60639.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Ms. Garcia, you have a cosmetology license with the state of Illinois, do you?
Yes.
And how long have you been a hairstylist?
Uh, 10 years.
And you've worked, but during those 10 years, you've worked for other people or rented chairs in other people's salons. Is that right?
Yes.
And you found this store, empty store that had been, used to be a hair salon. Is that right?
Correct.
And so it's nice because it's kind of ready to move in if you could get a special use. Is that right?
Right.
And you'd like to have your own business and maybe hire another chair or two eventually, if you could. Is that right?
Yes.
And so you're asking the board to grant you a special use so that you can get your license to run a hair salon at this address. Is that right?
Yes.
And you and I fashioned an affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the special use, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that affidavit. Is that right?
Yes.
And is Joe Ryan here?
He is.
There you go. And you've already been sworn, Mr. Ryan, at my request. Did you do a report looking at whether or not Ms. Li, Ms. Garcia's application could meet all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this relief? And also, that it wouldn't have a negative effect on the surrounding property values?
Joseph Ryan with Cell Plaza Group, 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago. I examined all the criteria. This was a former salon. So my opinion was based on the fact that as a former salon, it had no negative impact on the neighborhood, and it met the rest of the criteria.
Mr. Chairman, that's all of our our case in chief, and both witnesses are available for questions.
Great. And Ms. Garcia, just to clarify, it's, it's only hair, right? You only do hair at the salon?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and what are your hours? Sorry if it was already mentioned.
My hours would be Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 7. I'm sorry, Tuesday through Friday, 11 to 7, Saturday, 9 to 5, and then Sundays by appointment only.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? No, thank you, Ms. Garcia. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. 177-21-S at 3174 North Broadway. And I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed nail salon.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Moore, M-O-R-E, and hopefully, we have Tuman Hong available?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing Ms. Hong?
Yeah, hi, Ms. Hong. Will you please state your name and address?
Yes, it's Tuman Hong. Address is 4904 North Troy, Chicago, 60625.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
So Tuman, you're in a family of nail salon people, kind of your whole family works at this address in a nail salon. Is that right?
Yes.
And your family's been operating this nail salon for how many years?
12 years, some more.
Okay, and you're a student now, but you work in the salon as well. Is that right?
Yes.
And unfortunately, at some point, someone in the family dropped the ball and didn't renew their license a couple of years ago. Is that right?
Yes.
And you've become the compliance officer in the family, and it's your job assigned to get, to renew the light, re-up, re-establish the license. Is that right?
Yes.
And so you've come before the board asking to have a special use to allow, basically, your family to continue the nail salon that you've, your family has been operating for 12 years.
Yes.
And you and I drafted a affidavit where you addressed all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the special use, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
Is Joe Ryan available?
I am.
And at my request, Mr. Ryan, did you look at and make a report about the viability of a nail salon at this address?
I did.
And did you find that this application can meet all of the necessary criteria and would not have a negative effect on the surrounding property values?
That is correct.
And if you continue to testify, would you testify consistently with your report?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, that's the essence of our case, and, and both people are available for further questions.
Okay, great. Ms. Hong, it sounds like the nail shop has been in business for quite some time successfully. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Could the applicant just describe whether or not there have been any complaints or concerns expressed to any official parties in regard to your business operations over the years?
Oh, no, not at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I might add that when I Yeah, I might add that when I told Alderman Tony that, you know, we were filing this, he couldn't believe it. He said, "Well, that's been there forever. Why would you be filing for a new application?" And he had no negative, he had heard no negative comments.
That's great. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this under consideration. Thank you so much for coming in today, Ms. Hong.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Yep. Next up, we've got 178-21-S, 179, and 180-21-Z. Quickly, the department's recommendation on the special use. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, six-dwelling unit building, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings stated March 29, 2021, prepared by Stoneberg Plus Growth Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name, for the record, is Tom Moore, M-O-R-E, and hopefully, we have Mr. Padreak Connelly available.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, and thank you, committee, for all your time today.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing, Mr. Connelly?
Yeah, Mr. Connelly, please state your name and address.
My name is Porrick Connolly, 4529 North Ravenswood Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60640.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And even though it's, it said Porrick, it reads like Padreak, is that right?
That's correct, Tom. Been a long road.
Anyway, so you came across these two old storefronts on Addison that have been, basically, are not viable as storefronts anymore, is that right?
That's correct.
And the two buildings were for sale, and you actually talked to the immediate neighbors, and everyone that you talked to would prefer to have an all residential building rather than re-establishing additional storefronts, is that right?
That's right.
And everything to the west is all residential, is that right?
That's right.
And it's also zoned residential, so the fact that you're building a residential building in a B district next to a residential creates some setback issues for you, is that right?
That is right, yes.
So, but you watched this board one or two times ago, and you watched them have extended discussions about bridges, and your original design had a bridge from the back of the units to the garage roof deck. And after you heard all of their questions, you decided to amend your site plan to show a Hopkins compliant staircase, is that right?
That is right, yeah. We removed the bridge and added a staircase up to the garage rooftop deck, yep.
And that's because you wanted to limit the issues and hopefully, up the success of your plan, is that right?
That's right.
And the if you had a commercial building, you could build as of right 50 feet high, is that right?
Yeah, we have done so in the neighborhood in recent years, yes.
But, but your, your building will be 47 feet high, so it'll be three feet short of that, is that right?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
But it's two feet higher than a all-residential building would be. And again, you would blame the fact that you're next to a residential district, but building in a, you're building an all-residential building in a B district, is that right?
Yes.
And so the main thrust of our request today is to allow round-floor residential, but you also have that variance that you're asking for as well, is that right?
That is right, yes.
And you actually got letters of support from the immediate neighbors because they would prefer the all-residential building, is that right?
I didn't get letters of support. I got verbal support. I had conversations with them, and they, they offered their verbal support, but it's hard to act.
And as far as you're aware, there's no one objecting to this, is that right?
I don't know of anybody objecting.
And, and you're aware that I received phone calls and sent people plans and followed up with discussions with those people, and to date, we've had no one objecting, is that right?
That's, that's right, yeah.
And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
That's right, yes.
And incidentally, in terms of no objections, we also dealt with Alderman Martin's office and sent them plans as well, is that right?
That's right, yes.
Okay. Do we have Jack Stoneberg available?
Yes, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing, Mr. Stoneberg?
Mr. Stoneberg, please state your name and address.
My name is Jack Stoneberg. Our office is at 3320 North Ravenswood in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Great.
And you, sir, are a licensed architect, is that right?
Yes, we, I am licensed, yes.
And you designed this building at Porrick's request, and you had to make certain adjustments because it is a B B-zone property, but you're building an all-residential building next to a residential zoning, is that right?
Yes.
And will you tell the board how, what problems that created and what the result was?
Yeah, I think the first, one of the primary issues was the parking, where Porrick's by right, able to build six, you know, residential units, and he wants to provide six parking spaces that are enclosed in a garage. And the, the mathematics of having a six-car garage and the 60% limitation of an accessory structure, rear yard, is requiring a reduction in the rear yard, so that the garage isn't in the rear yard, it's in the primary yard. And after that condition, Carlos also is requesting, now that the garage is property line to property line, that that garage has to have a side yard reduction. So it's, the, the main item was the parking and the accessory structure for the, the the trash enclosure combination was exceeding the 60% maximum for an accessory structure in the rear yard. Go ahead.
And that the, the six units is as of right, but giving them each a parking space, as you've just described, was the problem that you had to overcome.
Exactly, yes, an enclosed parking space.
Okay, and the actual distance between this building and the buildings on either side will still be significant, is that right?
Yeah, all the side yard setbacks are in compliance. The front yard setback is in compliance, so there was no request for relief for either side yards, and given that this is a 50-foot wide lot, you know, I think the side yards extend up to four and a half feet at the, at the light courts, so that's a pretty broad setback, yes.
Okay, but, but as you said, the, the reason we needed a variance was because the garage is lot line to lot line and exceeded the 60%.
Yes, and it's, and it's just a product of the math. It's not, we're not building an excessively large garage by any means. It's, it's, it's the the minimal requirements, really, for six, for six cars enclosed.
And as a matter of fact, you had room between the building and the garage to have a parallel stair that went from the ground to the garage roof deck, is that right?
Yes, we're, we're trying to retain as much open space back there as possible for, for open space yard decks, that, that sort of thing.
And will you explain to the board the issue with the extra two feet of height?
I think the extra two feet of height, I mean, there's a four-story building immediately to the south, and, you know, this structure is an entirely all-residential structure. You know, we look at the floor-to-floor or the floor-to-ceiling heights, we're not requesting anything that's not normal. So the floor-to-floor heights are nine feet, two inches. And, and so just given the residential, you know, duplex up, duplex down, that became the, the height limitation of 47, and I think that's the three feet less than what's, what's allowed if you built an all-commercial building.
Okay. And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variations requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And then is, don't go away, please, and is Joe Ryan available?
He is.
And you, sir, looked at this location in terms of having a ground-floor residential as opposed to reduplicating, having new storefronts there, and what did you find?
There's no demand for storefronts on this location, fronting on Addison, west on either side of the subject property, our residential buildings. And as I said, no demand for retail.
Okay, so in your opinion, this makes sense to have an all-residential building at this location?
This is more in, in character with the neighborhood than a retail first-floor use would be.
And you made a report where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you testify consistently with that, is that right?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, those are, that's our case in chief, and if all of these people are available for questions.
I'm probably not the best person to ask on this question, so there might be a follow-up, but how, how tall are the ceilings in each unit?
Nine feet, two inches, roughly. I mean, they vary, given the concrete block benchmarks, but I, I think it's, they're nine feet, nine feet, two inches.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I didn't hear that?
Well, I'm just asking the board if they have other questions.
Oh.
Hi, this is Joanne Salt. I feel like I missed the hardship here, so can you explain that again, or period?
So, Jack, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, there's two, three different denials, or, right, there's there's the denial for the, for the reduction in the rear yard for the garage, and I think.
Not, sorry to interrupt, but I, I think I understand what you're asking for relief for. I'm asking, what is the hardship? So I just want to make sure that's what you're answering.
Yeah, so I was gonna attack them from each separate denial, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
I mean, denial one, reduction in the rear yard. I, I think, you know, to have an enclosed garage for each residential unit seems like that would be required to sell the unit, and that doesn't seem like an extensive request. So I think that, that would be the hardship number for the, for the reduction in the rear yard for the garage was just the need for an enclosed garage space. I think the, 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 the special use request, I think, you know, the gentleman kind of answered that there's no demand for retail on Addison. And, you know, I think Porrick's built several projects close, in close proximity to this, one that's right around the corner on Western Avenue, which we, I think, completed two and a half years ago, and he still hasn't been able to lease that ground-floor retail space. So I think relative to the primary request, the special use, I think that would be consistent with, you know, a hardship. And I think the, the, the height request is, is, is a factor of, you know, having a kind of a typical residential floor-to-ceiling height, which is what I'm saying is around nine feet, nine feet, two inches. We're not building 10-foot-high ceilings in this space, or even nine, you know, you know, 10 and a half, we're building nine feet, two. So the, the hardship is, is reflected on the building height, is just a product of the, the use request to change to residential, and then having a nine-foot ceiling.
Um, so is there any hardship tied to the lot itself? You, you would explain some hardships related to, or difficulties related to what the developer would like to build, but anything?
It's, it's just from the lot that's adjacent to an R-zone, and it's adjacent to a B-zone. So it kind of is a budding both two different zone districts, and now that happens frequently. You know, but so in this instance, you know, we're having to use a product of the setback on the residential zone and a product of the business zone to establish our front yard setback. So I think we've tried to address kind of the inconsistencies that, that form when you have different budding zones. And, and even to the fact that we've tried our best to comply with the rear yard open space of a residential zone, whereas we're not required to have any rear yard open space. So I, I think just having different budding zones and having some inconsistent criteria is, is, is how I would answer that question.
Um, okay, and then, sorry, last question. What are the, in terms of number of bedrooms, I don't know if these are all the same, but can you just touch on the unit mix? Three bedrooms, bedrooms, whatever.
Porrick, do you want to talk about the unit design, or do you want me to answer?
And I agree, yeah.
Yeah, so there are duplex downs and duplex ups. The duplex units all have four bedrooms, and the simplex units have three bedrooms. So there are four units with four bedrooms and two units with three bedrooms.
Thank you.
Will you remind me, sorry, will you remind me how many parking spaces there are?
Six. There's six, six units and six parking spaces.
Any questions from the board? Good, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, moving right along, 181-21-Z at 3411 South Prairie Avenue.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is my last case, and thank you for your patience with me. My name, for the record, is Tom Moore, M-O-R-E, and hopefully, Mr. Eric Perrino is with us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you mind swearing in, Mr. Perrino?
Yeah, Mr. Perrino, you state your name and address, please?
My name is Eric Perrino, and my address is 1617 West Grand, Apartment 2E, Chicago, Illinois, 60622.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great.
And so you found this vacant lot that you would like to put, basically, a townhouse, kind of like a missing tooth into this row of townhouses, is that right?
Correct. Correct.
The whole, the whole block, almost the whole block is uh, um, townhouses or um, uh, row houses, is that right?
Correct, this plot specifically used to be a row house when it was constructed fifty years ago.
Okay, and so, uh, and the lot is nineteen feet wide, is that right?
Approximately, yes.
And um, you, uh, it's also a landmark area, is it?
It is within the Calumet Giles Landmark District.
So you had to first go with your plan to landmarks, and they approved it, is that right?
That is correct.
And also the Gap Community Group in, uh, approved it as well, is that right?
They have, and they sent a letter of support for that, my project.
And then also your um, immediate neighbors uh, have approved it, is that right?
Yes.
So, um, you're uh, asking the board uh, for a variance to uh, basically replace this row house, um, and uh, you and I have drafted a affidavit where you addressed each of the criteria necessary for, for the board to grant this relief, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then is Mr. Home available, architect?
Yes.
And um, you sir, um, are a licensed architect, is that right?
No, I'm an architectural designer at PMBC Architects.
And uh, PMBC, uh, you worked with the uh, Architective Record, and you've worked on the design of this from, under that person's direction.
Quick, Tom, let's, let's get Mr. Home sworn in too.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Home, will you state your name and address, please?
Um, my address is nine six five West Chicago Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four two.
Great, thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great.
And you sir have worked on this project from the beginning under the direction of uh, your architectural firm, is that right?
Yes.
And um, you actually, and I think we've submitted exhibits, um, took a survey of the whole block, and the block is almost all um, row houses or townhouses that are, are um, stacked up kind of one against the other, is that right?
Yes.
And that's the plan here is to fit this, this one right in between, into the nineteen-foot space between the houses on either side, is that right?
Yes.
And uh, because you have a nineteen-foot wide lot, that creates a hardship for you to, you can't meet the side yard setbacks that you would be required to, uh, if you if you had a normal twenty-five-foot wide lot, is that right?
Yes.
And so you have otherwise met all of the criteria and um, zoning code, building code regulations necessary to build this uh, townhouse, but you need this variance in order to make it work, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I worked out an affidavit wherein you um, addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief requested, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Chairman, that's our, basically our case in chief.
Yep, great, and uh, and, and I know it's just, it's the setbacks going thirteen point eight five, I believe, to twelve point seven five, and that's the front setback. Um, I know there's a detached garage, is there any roof deck plan for that garage?
No.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Okay, thanks for coming, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Board, for your patience with me and for enduring uh, um, all of my cases.
Our pleasure, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are moving to calendar number one eighty-two dash twenty-one dash S. I'm going to quickly read the department's recommendation as Council of Persia gets settled. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed liquor store, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Could, could, sorry if I mispron- or not pronouncing this correctly, but um, Kodabai Patel Koran Seven Inc. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated February second, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Kodabai Patel. Let's see, is uh, John Pekarski here? John, you might be on mute, um, because we see you on.
Yes, I'm Kodabai Patel.
Oh, great, yeah, one second, um, sir, we're just getting the, the lawyer on first to present the case. I see you, John, yep, just uh, to unmute. There we go, I think we're good, John?
Uh, again, uh, for the record, my name is John Pekarski. I'm the attorney for uh, Kodabai Patel. Uh, who has, who is joining me this afternoon, or this evening, whether it's cocktail time. Um, and uh, I also have with me Joseph Ryan, uh, who is our real estate appraiser and, and expert. This is kind of an interesting case, inasmuch as the site has been a, a food store with a uh, incidental liquor license since uh, about nineteen eighty-nine. My client is purchasing the property, uh, and uh, unfortunately, over the course uh, the public interest in, in small uh, mini-mark type stores, uh, such as this one has waned, so that uh, it, it, it is impossible in today's market to uh, continue on as a, a mini-mark with a liquor component. So my client would like to uh, create a, a full-service liquor store at the site. And the reason for the decline, of course, in uh, the type of, of uh, business is right down the street, a uh, a Walgreens moved in, uh, and right across the street, uh, a uh, Tony's uh, supermarket moved in, so that competition is severe. Uh, purchasing power is substantially lower, and uh, pricing is substantially lower than ours. Um, we have uh, created a uh, a, a store that employs one full-time and one part-time employee. Uh, it is open uh, seven days a week from twelve uh, noon to ten P M. Uh, we have sought out Alderman Ramirez Rosa, who has issued us a le- letter of recommendation, and uh, to show the goodwill that he has toward uh, our entity. Uh, he created a loading zone, zone in front of, of the uh, the building. Um, so that uh, we have established great rapport with, with him and with our neighbors. Uh, as you uh, can see from the photographs, uh, the property in question is a two-story uh, building with commercial on the first floor, four units of commercial and apartments uh, over. The uh, two restaurants that uh, are on either side of, of uh, our client are actually owned by the same people. And they're very happy with us, they, they uh, have met with us and, and, and our, our our cheering section. Uh, the Alderman, as I indicated to you, is solidly behind us and has given us a letter of, of recommendation, which unfortunately came in a little bit too late to get over to the board, uh, but I will uh, present that to the uh, staff uh, at, at a later time. Um, that being said, uh, I have, as I said, my client, uh, and Mr. Joseph Ryan. Uh, I would call Mr. Patel, please state your name, address, and uh, business, sir?
Yes, I'm Kodabai Patel, nine nine one Carlo Drive, Disciplin, Illinois, six zero zero one six.
Mr. Patel, and uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's your intention to own and operate the uh, liquor store, the proposed liquor store, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, in your, uh, to the best of your knowledge, after talking with the, the old owners, uh, have they ever been cited uh, by the Chicago Police Department or any other city agency?
I think so, no.
Okay, correct, uh, now, uh, is it correct that your hours of operation will be from noon till ten P M, seven days per week, is that correct?
Yes.
And is it correct that you have met with the uh, sought out Alderman Ramirez Rosa and received a, a letter of recommendation?
The true name.
Yes, okay, and um, i- it, is, is it your testimony that uh, absent the introduction of a Walgreens right down the street and a Tony's supermarket across the street, uh, with, with those two businesses being introduced, that there is, there is no opportunity for a viable uh, mini-mark with a liquor component, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And I have produced a uh, uh, an affidavit on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I asked you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answer be the same?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions of, of uh, Mr. Patel. Uh, I would call Mr. Joseph Ryan.
I'm here.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening.
Uh, at my request, have you examined the subject site?
Yes.
Can you please describe the subject site?
Uh, it's rectangular shaped site, improved with a, a commercial building. Uh, that formerly he had an incidental liquor license and is now applying for a packaged liquor license.
And uh, is the, the building and the building type consistent with uh, the neighborhood?
Yes.
And uh, have you uh, examined the viability of a small uh, mini-mark with liquor components only?
Yes, it, it, it um, uh, a, a mini-mark at this location uh, is not viable, there are too many alternative on national chain products already established in the market, a full-service liquor store would be much more viable.
And uh, have you formulated an opinion as to whether or not uh, there will be any negative impact? Uh, if, if the proposed uh, special use is granted on the community?
Uh, no, there will be not, there's liquor stores in every neighborhood in the city.
Good, and uh, i- i- in your opinion, uh, would the public welfare be served by uh, the introduction of the full-service liquor store?
Yes, there's demand for um, full-service liquor stores.
And in fact, your, your uh, report uh, cites uh, almost a dozen of them, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, now, uh, in your opinion, does the proposed use comply with all of the standards set out in the Chicago zoning ordinance?
It does, yes.
I have no further questions of Mr. Ryan.
Great, um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna just bring questions back to the board, any questions from the board? Okay, I'm not hearing many, so uh, Mr. Patel, good luck, and thanks for coming today.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving right along to um, calendar numbers eighty, one eighty-four dash twenty-one dash Z and one eighty-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Um, so in terms of us present, um, we can go ahead and get started.
Hi, this is Zach McMaines. The applicant.
Hey, how's it going, um, we are, oh, I see, um, I see Ms. Shaw, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, hi, Karen Shaw, on behalf of the applicants, Ally McGuire and Zachary McMaines.
Great.
Uh, today, we're here seeking um, variations to, variations to the um, uh, F A R and setback, the first variation we are seeking is to allow uh, increase of the floor area from uh, two thousand one hundred and forty-two square feet in existence fifty years ago to two thousand three hundred and eighty-two square feet. This will allow the construction of a two-story rear addition and side stair to an existing two-story um, building with basement. In addition, we're seeking um, that the existing zero uh, setback be recognized. Um, currently, the ordinance requires a um, a two-foot setback on the north side of the property with a combined setback of three point six feet. Um, the property is an improved lot, a hundred and twenty-four point three feet by eighteen point two feet, containing approximately two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven square feet. Um, the property has, is an improved lot, um, with a townhouse that shares party walls with adjoining properties to the north and south. The property is currently in a dilapidated state and has been used as a single-family home. After all improvements and renovations are made, it will be used again as a single-family residential home. At issue is the wood frame deck, which we see here, um, it's the um, second property away from the sidewalk, yes, there, there we go, the, the one that's blocked in red. Um, it is a wood, wood frame deck and port and um, uh, I'm sorry, it's a wood frame deck and porch on masonry um, on a foundation existing on the current property. Uh, what we're seeking today is to bring the porch um, into compliance with existing ordinance um, and to have it conform to the neighbors, uh, both to the, to the right and to the left, um, if the board can see. Um, both neighbors have infilled their porches to make it a habitable living space. Um, my clients wish to do the same. Um, today we have, today we have with me, um, the property owner, Today, we have, today we have with me the property owner Zach McMaines. And the, and our expert, Robert Murphy. I would like to call the property owner Zach McMaines.
Mr. McMaines, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, and just so you're aware, I'm in a public location getting my vaccine right now, so I apologize if any. Background noise goes on, my address is nine zero five North Orleans Street, apartment seventeen oh four. Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one zero.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Congratulations on the vaccine.
Thank you, very excited, very nervous.
Mr. McMaines, you signed a sworn affidavit that we submitted on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
And is it fair to say that all testimony that you're providing today will be consistent with submitted affidavit, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, just to get to the abbreviated version of this hearing. You're seeking today a variation to the floor area, correct?
Yes.
And what you're seeking to do is to make that floor area, which currently is an uninhabitable uninhabitable porch space into a habitable place, is that correct?
Yes.
And you intend to have bedrooms there, bathrooms and a kitchen, is that right?
Yes.
And the screen that we're looking at today, the image we're looking at right now, the property is highlighted in orange, is that correct?
Yes.
And the the porch area that we're seeking a variation to is highlighted in red, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so that area right there is what you're seeking to infill, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and your neighbors, address one eight eight three and address eighteen seventy-nine, they both have infilled their porches, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, we are going to be in line with the back of their houses.
All right, now with respect to the setback. The the property existing came with a zero foot setback, setback, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, this is eighteen eighties townhome that is shares walls with both its north and south neighbors.
Okay, and the setback as it exists does not interfere with your neighbors' airlight and privacy rights, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you have received support from from your neighbors for this project, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, they have both provided letters of support.
Okay, and the Alder, and the Alderman has also provided support for your project, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and we have submitted on your behalf, letters of support from both your neighbors and the Alderman, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and in terms of. Sorry, let me go back, you are, this project is not exclusively for making money off the property, is that correct?
That's correct, we intend to raise a family here and live here for a long time and can't wait to move into the neighborhood.
Okay, and your intention then is to make an unused space productive. And in conformity with the characteristics of the neighborhood, is that right?
Yes, we'd like to be in compliance with the city requirements as well as continue to uphold the. Integrity of the surrounding properties.
Okay, and the hardship that we're we're looking at is the unusual conditions that were existing fifty years ago, is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and those conditions are no longer practical or useful for current, the current character of the neighborhood, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, and I'm about to get the needle stuck in my arm, so apologies.
Okay, last question, this provides a, not getting the variation would provide a legitimate hardship. And practical difficulty in that you would not be able to continue with your project and improve, make the needed improvements on the property, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Michelle, we can probably, if there's more questions, we can streamline and punch to the affidavit.
Thank you so much.
Just let the board get the questions on, we've had applicants thriving before and everyone remembers this, but that really stresses me out, I have. More sympathy for someone getting their vaccine, so.
All done.
If you put an affidavit on the record, we'll we'll streamline the questions.
All right.
I am all done, so I can ask any more questions that are needed.
Actually, I have no further questions for this witness. Okay. I leave it to the board for any further questions. But I would like to call my next, I'm sorry, do we want to have questions after my witnesses?
Let's get them, let's get them on as well, and then, yeah, that'll give the applicant some time too, I think.
All right, I'd like to call my next witness, Robert Murphy.
Hi, my name is Robert Murphy, I'm a licensed architect in Illinois, I live at forty-eight sixty-four West Berwin Avenue in Chicago.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you please swear in the witness?
Yep, Mr. Murphy, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, you signed a sworn affidavit. Which we submitted on your behalf, and you also provided a report which we also submitted on your behalf in support of this project, correct?
Correct.
And your affidavit and report contain your findings, findings and conclusions on this project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the the document that we're viewing right now, you created this drawing, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and you're the architect for this project, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so just focusing on the porch area. We're seeking to infill the porch to make it a habitable living space, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and it's the intention of this project. To make a habitable living space, but also to be in conformity with neighbors and the surrounding neighborhood, is that correct?
Correct, we are not changing the character of the home.
Okay, now with respect to the variation. Where we are increasing the habitable living square footage by infilling the porch, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and that unfortunately violates the existing ordinance, is that right?
Yes, we're about to, a little bit more than two hundred square feet over. FAR would allow, because we're on a non-standard lot.
And if the variation were not allowed, would this project be able to proceed?
It would not.
And in terms of the hardship. Is the hardship the unusual conditions? Of the property which is constrained by, constrained by ordinance requirements existing fifty years ago?
Yes.
Okay, and does this constraint create a legitimate hardship and practical difficulty to make the needed improvements to the property?
Yes, it does, the owners wish to improve their property to bring in conformance with their neighbors in terms of square footage. And size of the home, not any larger than actually the existing footprint of this house. Will change, it's just infilling the porches, and there's a row of about eight. Townhouses that go back to the eighteen eighties. Which are now zone RS three, which requires a setback, but none of the houses have setbacks, so there's a hardship here based on zoning. That we want to be in conformance with the requirements of the city, but also allow this, you know, the owner to have. A real benefit from the property.
I'm telling you, so sorry to cut in, because that was helpful response, but I think with the witnesses left, if we. Only get new information on the record and we rest on their affidavits other than that.
Okay, does the board need any information on the setback issue, if not, then we can rest on the affidavit?
If it's new, yeah, if it's new, let's go for it, I think we've covered a lot of the, what's happening here.
Okay, nothing new.
Okay, great. I think you have one more witness, though, we should at least get on the record.
Oh, I only had two witnesses.
Oh, sorry about that, I'm probably looking at the wrong one or.
We do, it was the other applicant, but she's she's not available right now.
Okay, great, so is it okay with you if I move the questions from the board?
Absolutely.
Any questions from the board on this one?
This is Commissioner Esposito, can you just describe what sort of communication you might have had with your neighboring property owners? About your plan?
So we have shared, this is Zach McMaines, the applicant. We have shared the plans with both of our neighbors and reviewed them with them. And received both of the letters of approval from them. Or letters of support, rather.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration, thank you, everyone, thanks for the comprehensive case.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
You too, you too. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we're now moving into the land of continuances, I believe we're there. Yep, so next up, I'm gonna call calendar number three forty-three dash twenty dash S. And three forty-four dash twenty dash Z. Let me quickly read the department's recommendation while everyone gets situated. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a sports and recreation. Participation use within an existing one-story building with new onsite parking areas. Provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Neconcheeta Indoor Field LLC. And and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April thirteen, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Natalie Regan, Architect Engineer. Oh, there you are, Mark, yep, so whenever you're ready, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak, I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington. I represent the applicants and have with me today, excuse me, my associate, Agnes Plekka. On behalf of the applicants, today, actually, only Yolanda Dominguez. Although I believe we also have her daughter, Yolanda, too, helping out today. Her husband, Jose Dominguez, had a scheduling conflict, he's out of town today. But we, we'd like to move forward with Yolanda. Also have Jose Ponce, the project architect, and Joseph Ryan, our expert witness. We've got two cases, the first case is a special use for an indoor soccer facility. The background information is that Yolanda and Jose own this building, they've owned it for a number of years. They used to operate their business out of this building, but their business moved out years ago. So the present plan, given the weak market for a factory use in this neighborhood. The plan now is to use this space for indoor soccer facility, soccer with very popular sport, especially in this particular neighborhood. There's a second case for the elimination of the one loading berth. This is a large building, I believe they cited us for the loading space because of the size of the building. I would note, we've submitted the floor plan and the soccer facility is not going to take up the whole building, number one. And number two, the nature of an indoor soccer facility, we don't expect a lot of deliveries, et cetera, that would necessitate a loading space. Especially in an old building that has never had a loading space. So those are the the two cases, and with that, as I said, Jose is not here, I believe we have Yolanda on the call. It might be a little bit quicker if I would, Yolanda has personal knowledge of her parents' plans, might be a little quicker if I work through Yolanda, the daughter, with your permission?
Yeah, let's just make sure to swear her mother in.
Oh, the mother's there and she's got the affidavit, so she'll testify also.
Yep, yep, great.
Yolanda, are you, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
All right, good, so we've got them both.
Yeah, first I'll swear, I'll swear you and Yolanda, so you please state your name and address.
Yolanda Dominguez, address ninety-one sixteen South Trip Avenue, Oakland, Illinois, six zero four five three.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Yolanda, what's your, is your, what's your mother's name, sorry?
Oh, that was me, my daughter.
That was, sorry about that.
I know, the names are the same, so.
Okay, so wait, it's the same name, so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Different last name, okay, the other Yolanda on the call. You could please state your name and address for the record?
My name, Yolanda Valerio, address fifty-two oh one Alexander Place, Oakland, Illinois, six oh four five three.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I'll first call Yolanda Valerio. Yolanda, again for me, state your name and address.
Yolanda Valerio, fifty-two oh one Alexander Place, Oakland, Illinois, six oh four five three.
And Yolanda, what relationship are you to Yolanda Dominguez and Jose Dominguez?
Daughter.
Good, Yolanda, is it true that your mother and father own the subject property?
Yes.
Also true, as I said, that they used to operate a business there?
Yes.
What type of business was that?
Wholesale distribution for spices and candies.
And when did that business move out?
We moved out in twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Okay, so the present plan, though, is to use the space inside the building for an indoor soccer facility?
Yes.
And who do you, and who do you expect to use the soccer facility?
All right, we're expecting children between ages of three to seventeen.
And on the weekends, you'd expect to have soccer tournaments in the facility?
Yeah, soccer games, tournaments, depending on whatever their schedule is.
During the week, you'd expect to have soccer practices for those same teams?
Yes.
Good. Yolanda, what days of the week would you expect the soccer facility to be open?
Monday through Friday during the week as well as the weekends.
Okay, and what what hours a day on those days?
During the week, we're anticipating nine AM through nine PM, and during the weekend, six AM to nine PM.
Okay, that sounds good, I think that's all I have of Yolanda Valerio. I'd like to call next, Yolanda Dominguez.
Yes.
Yolanda, would you state again your name and your address?
Yolanda Dominguez, ninety-one sixteen South Trip Avenue, Oakland, Illinois, six zero four five three.
And again, correct that you and your husband, Jose, own the subject property?
Yes, we do.
And also true that you and your husband, Jose, are the members of the LLC that applied for the special use?
Yes.
And you're here today for zoning permission to operate an indoor soccer facility?
Yes.
And Yolanda, you signed an affidavit that we prepared for you and filed in this case?
Yes.
And if I would ask you and continue to ask you the questions, you would testify consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Good, Mr. Chairman, that's all I I would have, unless you've got questions.
Do you want to put the other witnesses on, Mark?
And then, yes, and but and before I do, I forgot to mention that. In addition to the department recommendation, and we did work extensively with both the planning department and and CDOT. Given some questions with respect to this old industrial building, adaptive reuse, never easy. But this building actually has been before the board once before. And it was back in two thousand and fourteen on us, the same application for a special use for the approval for an indoor soccer facility. And the board did approve the application at that time, calendar number one two one dash fourteen S. We had submitted a copy of that resolution with our materials on Monday, so.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, all right, so number two, our second witness is Jose, Jose Ponce, Jose, are you there? Jose, are you on the call?
Chairman, I don't see Jose Ponce.
Okay.
Okay, well, someone named Rafael just raised a hand, so I'm watching him, maybe that's something.
I think that. I think we're gonna try to make a call.
Yeah, Agnes, go ahead.
Yes, I am sorry, Agnes Black, the other attorney on the on the case, yes, Rafael, that's that's our architect, if you can please promote him.
Hello.
Yep, is this Rafael?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good, so.
All right, so we're fine, okay.
Mark, go ahead, so Rafael's the architect, not Jose? Mark, go ahead. So Rafael's the architect, not Jose?
Well, let's see, who, gentlemen, who do we have on the line here?
Okay, my first name is Jose, and my last, my middle name is Rafael. So that is why he's a little confused. It's Jose Rafael Ponce.
And I apologize. But the last name is Ponce?
Yes.
So I did have that correct, okay.
We have two Yolandas and we have two Jose's, so it's kind of like.
And at the end of the day, too, well, if I say a name, there's two people who might answer, that's fine. So Rafael, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, my full name is Jose Rafael Ponse Mena, and my address is six two two High Road, Glen El, Illinois.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
All right. Jose, you are the, you're the project architect?
Yes.
And Jose, in your opinion, this special use for a soccer facility is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning?
Yes.
And that's with respect to the special use. Jose, is it also true we have a second case to excuse a loading berth?
Yes.
And Jose, from your view of this, this is an old industrial building, correct?
Yes.
And no evidence that this building has ever had a loading berth or a loading space?
Yes, it's correct. No evidence.
And given our proposed use of indoor soccer facility, is it true that we don't see any need to do a new loading space at this time?
Yes, it is true.
And we do, in fact, have a parking lot, and there is street parking, so that if there are any small deliveries, there certainly is room for a delivery truck.
Yes, there is one.
Good. And Jose, true that we had prepared and you had signed an affidavit in connection with this case that we filed?
Yes, I do.
And if I continued my questions, you would answer consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
That's all I have of Jose.
Okay, great. Counselor, anyone else before we?
Yes, Joe Ryan? Special use, Joe Ryan?
I'm here, sorry.
Thank you, Joe. Name and address?
Joseph Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Joe, you had prepared a written report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
And has your credentials?
It does.
You're familiar with the subject property and surrounding property?
Yes, I am.
You believe that the special use complies with all applicable standards of the ordinance?
It does, yes.
Also, in the interest of public convenience?
Yes.
Also, will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
No, not, none whatsoever.
And Joe, we referenced that report. If I continue to ask you questions, would you answer those questions consistent with your written report?
Yes, I would.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I would rest with Joe.
Great, okay, good. So questions. One question coming up, when we this in, in active industrial corridor, is always just concern, confirm and safety for those people who will be coming to play soccer at the center. Can you talk a little bit about the surroundings? Is there a lot of active, like, what type of industrial corridor? Is there a lot of big machinery action, or what else going on there?
What? The property is, is, is right next to the overpass over the IHB Railroad Yard, which is immediately, not immediately, but it's maybe a block south. So there's an overpass that goes from seventy-six to seventy-fourth Street. So the predominant use in the area is a container company that is located east and south of the subject property. There's another small industrial building on Kedzie. There is a building on Kedzie that was an industrial building that's been renovated into a kidney dialysis facility, sorry, across the street. The people that own the container company bought ten acres there, and next to east or west of that is the new high school. So the rain plant that was across the street has been torn down. Nabisco is still on, on the other side, but then north of that is residential and Marquette Park. So those are the predominant uses in the area.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mark Kupiak here.
Yep.
Just to add to that, please note that the building is on the corner of Seventy-seventh and Kedzie, that there's an existing driveway on the north, north side of that building, right off Kedzie, that cars could come in, into the, into the site, through that driveway north of the building, so they could come in right off Kedzie.
Okay.
And it's on the corner of Kedzie and Seventy-seventh. Actually, south of Seventy-seventh is residential.
Right.
So the industrial uses that you, you might be concerned with, as Joe said, there's a container company, but that is to the east. So we would envision most of these people would come either on Kedzie or perhaps on Seventy-seventh, but the container company really wouldn't interfere with their, with their trip. There is some industrial north of the property, but again, Kedzie is a very convenient way for them to access the site, so they're not driving through some industrial area to arrive at the Kedzie.
Right, south of it is all residential.
Right. Okay, yeah. Okay, good. This paints a good picture. Great. Any, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Sorry about messing up everyone's names.
Have a good day.
Okay, quick announcement, that anyone who is signed in for matters sixty-eight and sixty-nine, I believe, twenty-one Z, let me confirm, yeah, sixty-eight and sixty-nine, twenty-one Z, that the matter was continued. We handled it midday. So we continued it until, let me confirm, I'm actually trying to remember. Until June eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. So if you're objecting to that matter, you'll have to resubmit a form. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to calendar number four twenty dash twenty dash S, which is at twenty-six oh eight West Fulton. I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the dog boarding kennel and daycare with up to six dogs for overnight kenneling and up to ten dogs for daycare, provided, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Fuzzy Urban Tales LLC. Number two, the develop, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, with site plan dated March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Grid Studio, Ramon Contreras, Architect. And number three, the kenneling and daycare use shall be limited to the ground floor only.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah. Oh, Paul Copac, I see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Copac. With me today, I have Mr. Luis Galago. I have our architect, Mr. Ramon Contreras, our expert witness, Mr. Paul Wasnicki. As you mentioned, the property question is a mixed two-story building, which is Zone B three dash one, commercial use on the first floor, and two floors of residential use. Could you please swear in my three witnesses, please?
Yep, I'll do them all at once. The first witness is Luis Gallego here. He's here. Oh, perfect, I see him.
I'm here, yeah.
Perfect. Will you please state your name and address?
My name is Luis Gallego, and I live in twenty-four thirty-six North Washington Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Next up, we'll go, is Paul Wasnicki here?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Paul. Will you state your name and address, please?
Paul Wasnicki, my business address is two twenty-one North LaSalle, Chicago, Illinois.
Great. And Paul, just to confirm, you're the, you're serving as land appraiser, right?
No, I'm serving, I'm serving as the urban planner.
Serving as urban planner, sorry about that. Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, sir.
Great, thank you.
We also have our architect, Mr. Ramon Contreras.
Perfect. Mr. Contreras, can you please state your name and address?
Ramon Contreras, fifty-two fifty-seven West Montrose, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four one.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Counselor, take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Gallego, would you please, you are the manager of the Fuzzy Fuzzy Urban Tales LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And you and your family have run a daycare for children in the neighborhood for approximately nineteen years, is that correct?
Yes.
And based on that, you, people were coming to you saying that we need a doggy daycare in the neighborhood, and that's how you got the idea to go forward with this, is that correct?
Yes.
And based, and we started this transaction back in July of two thousand and twenty, where we met at the Aldman's office, we had a community meeting, and at that community meeting, we received the support of the Logan Square Chamber of Commerce, is that correct?
Yes.
And we do have a letter indicating their support, which I believe we have supplied to Mr. Chairman. Also, as part of the reach out to the community, you went to your neighbors up and down the block, specifically to the condominiums that were, that are adjacent to the west of you. And even though you own the property to the east, you went down and met with your neighbors going east on that block, is that correct? And in fact, one of the, the Department of Planning asked you to get a petition, which you did have signed, indicating the local neighbors supporting your project, and we submitted those names to the to the department. You have never received any issues, anybody objecting to this or indicating they do not want this property, this use of this property, is that correct?
No.
Never had a problem with any of your neighbors, is that correct?
No, never.
And then the department asked you to incorporate a few things in your design, specifically because there's a residential use on the, on the second floor or third floor, that they wanted to make sure, because you have an outdoor dog area, play area, that you put up a fence so that the dogs and the residents would not interact, and you did that, is that correct?
Yes, right.
Part of your site plan. They also asked you to put up sound deafening fencing along the east and west lot lines, as well as plantings to deaden the noise to the neighborhood, and you also incorporated that into your plan, is that correct?
Yes, right.
We did an economic analysis that we presented to to the board, and we did it based on four, four dynamics. One for ten dogs, which essentially shows that at ten dogs, you would be losing approximately thirty-five hundred dollars a month, is that correct? And that, and if you only, if you were limited to twenty dogs, you would be breaking approximately even, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And where we start to make money in this transaction, or make it worthwhile to do this, is at thirty dogs, we make approximately seventy-two thousand dollars a year, and if we had permission to do forty dogs, we're looking at making approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Gallego, could you say, just speak up a little so we could all hear you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. You then went and went to the Blue Cross, I'm sorry, Red Cross, and got your certificate for dog and cat first aid, is that correct?
Yes, it's correct.
And then you went to the city, and there is no license in the city of Chicago for daycare, for dog daycare, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You get a general business license?
That's right, yeah.
And as, as far as you know, the city of Chicago does not have any criterion as to how many square feet that you need for each dog that you are going to have as daycare or for overnight care, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And, and we've checked the state of Illinois, and there are no guidelines for square footage for dog care for either the daycare or for the evening care, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
If this special use was granted, what would your hours of operation be?
Monday to Friday, seven to six PM, and weekends only for boarding.
And, and how many dogs would you anticipate having on a typical day for daycare?
Around, you know, like thirty to forty.
And how many dogs do you think you would be anticipate having for overnight stay?
Probably up to twenty.
I have no further questions for my client. I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? I apologize.
Sure.
When we looked at the, that the guidelines from the city of Chicago, and they do give you guidelines, but it adds to the amount of personnel that you have to have. And you agree to abide those, with those guidelines, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is, depending on the amount of dogs, you can have either two or three people at all times, and if you take them out in your outdoor area, one per, one person has to be out taking care of, watching those dogs, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
I have no further questions from my client.
Okay, so Counselor, I see that you are laying a bit of a foundation against the department's recommendation. So it's worthwhile for us to get someone on the line to address it, because what I heard from from the applicant is twenty dogs overnight and thirty during the day, whereas the city's recommendation, from the recommendation I just read, was six overnight and ten during the day.
That's correct.
Okay. So as we line up the department to speak on this, do you want to get in, get on any other witness?
Yes, I can, I'd like to call our architect, Mr. Ramon Contreras.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Contreras, would you please state your name?
Ramon Contreras.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you heard the testimony where the city department of planning requested to put sound, retarding fencing, as well as a fence that would prevent the, the dogs on the outside interacting with residents who might want to access to the alley? And you've implemented all these in your plan, is that correct?
Yes.
And we prepared a witness statement, which you signed, and if you were asked to testify, you would testify in substantial compliance with that?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions. Thank you. I have no further questions from my architect. I would now like to call Mr. Paul Wasnicki. Mr. Wasnicki, would you please state your name?
Paul Wasnicki.
And your place of business?
Would be 221 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois, and maintain an office space.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, request that we acknowledge Mr. Wasnicki as an expert for testifying at these proceedings.
Yep, we, we recognize Mr. Wasnicki, um, for his past roles and appearances, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Wasnicki, uh, what was the scope of your assignment in this case?
Well, I was hired to evaluate whether the granting of the requested special use will comply with the general criteria for special use approval as set forth in section seventeen thirteen oh nine oh five A of the Chicago zoning ordinance.
And you, actually, we both visited the site on a couple of occasions. You're familiar with the site, is that correct?
I visited it at least three times and inspected the properties twice.
And could you tell us a little bit about the property?
Well, the, the prop, the subject property is approved with a two and a half story frame. It's, it's a mixed-use building, which is currently unoccupied, vacant, containing two thousand eight hundred ninety-five square feet plus or minus. The ground floor commercial space contains one thousand four hundred and thirty square feet plus or minus, and that, that, that determination was made by, by using the definition referenced in section seventeen seventeen oh three oh five A of the Chicago zoning ordinance. And the zoning lot contains three thousand three hundred eighty-seven square feet, and is presently zoned B three one, Community Shopping District.
Mr. Wasnicki, uh, you've reviewed the interior site plan of the subject property, is that correct?
Oh, yes, I did.
As well as the traffic generally, currently generated in that area, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
You've also reviewed the city records for previously approved special uses at the pro- subject property, is that correct? We able to conclude that, other than the one previously proved, there was one other previously proved that this property, is that correct?
Well, there was a special use that was approved by the zoning.
I'm having trouble hearing the witness.
Sorry, I, I'll get closer. Sorry. Uh, the zoning board of appeals granted a special use to establish and locate a personal service salon. It was a nail salon, and that was pursuant to ZBA calendar number four seventy-four oh eight S, and that was approved on November twenty-first, two thousand and eight.
In your inspection of the surrounding area, did you determine there was a need for this type of use at the subject site?
Well, the, the word need, I think in this, if you were mean by need generally, the term need and necessity in zoning does not mean absolutely necessary, but means expedient or reasonably convenient to the general public. That is a direct quote from an Illinois appellate court decision, number Cosmopolitan Bank versus the Village of Niles. That's number eighty-one two, two, four, two, seven. So based on that, I think we can, we can basically say, yes, I think, based on this criteria, it's necessary for the, the applicant to process, receive special use approval, to locate and establish this dog, board, boarding kennel, daycare use in the ground floor of the tenant's space.
In your opinion, does the requested use, that is dog, boarding, kennel, and daycare, comply with the general criterion for special use as set forth under section seventeen thirteen oh nine oh five of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
It is, provided the board grants the special use.
I agree. Does the requested dog, boarding, kennel, and daycare use comply with all of the applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
It, it will provide, well, it should, provided the board, you know, grant the special use, yeah. But, um, is it for the, you're asking me, does, is it for the public convenience? Well, yeah, the requested special use to locate and operate this dorm boarding kennel and daycare facility within the existing storefront will be in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a general impact on the, on the, on the neighborhood and/or the larger community area.
And Mr. Wasnicki-
One other thing, I forgot. Um, in our description, there's, there's also an outside covered, some covered porch area, and it's about two hundred and twenty-seven square feet, and it's, it's between, it, it comes immediately above the building to the north. And that, that's, that's, I, after, you know, hearing the descriptions, I just wanted you to know that was in there also.
As you can see that, I'm sorry, I'm gonna point to it over here, existing covered area. Um, is the requested use compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site plan, building scale, and project design?
Well, the word, yes, it is. The word compatible is defined in the latest edition of Merriam-Webster's College Collegiate Dictionary. Compatible means harmonious, able to live and work together without conflicts. So based on that, the area of the proposed boarding kennel and daycare use is compatible with the characters of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design. I just brought, tried to, uh, just mentioned previously that there were some minor changes to the exterior at the rear of the lot that be, have been and will be incorporated into the design as presented, the final design that was presented by Mr. Coop.
Because the request is compatible with the characteristics of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics, hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, traffic generation?
Yes, it, it, proposed use will be compatible with the character of the other business uses in the area in terms of, such as hours of operation, exterior lighting, noise, and traffic generation. I won't get into the hours of operation, the owner did that. And I also did a, a, a review of the traffic, which is, is, is a fairly large component here, because Fullerton Avenue is both a sectioned lane street, and it has over thirty thousand four hundred movements. Those are fifteen thousand two hundred eastbound, and there's another fifteen thousand two hundred westbound. Let me continue on. To the east, two, approximately two blocks to the east is, east is Northwestern Avenue, which has a total of thirty-nine thousand two hundred movements, nineteen thousand nine hundred northbound, nineteen thousand three hundred southbound, and approximately two blocks to the west is North California Avenue, which is, which has approximately sixteen thousand one hundred movements, eight thousand six hundred north, seven thousand five hundred southbound. I just wanted to, to, to explain and identify the, the ADTs or the average daily traffic volumes were obtained both from the IDOT, Illinois Department of Transportation website and the Chicago Department transportation websites.
Is the project designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Well, the short answer is yes, because the, the pedestrian access to the subject site will not be modified on the exterior as a result of the proposed special use. Pedestrians will access the dog kennel facility and daycare through the existing entrance located at twenty-six oh eight West Fullerton Avenue, and the adjacent bill, businesses and residential uses will, will also be accessed from the existing, you know, public way, and it shouldn't be blocked by anything happening in this building, in this use.
Mr. Wasnicki, I mean, the, one of the issues here, beyond, you've checked the city of Chicago, uh, licensing, and there are no criteria for the amount of space that you need for a dog daycare, is that correct?
Um, I've gone through the zoning ordinance, um, I, and I've also reviewed the building code, that's correct.
And there's nothing in there. We actually went to the state of Illinois Department of Agriculture and, to see if they have any guidelines, and they do not have any guidelines, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Wasnicki, you did, in your, uh, report, indicate that you believe this could support between twenty-five and thirty-five dogs. How did you arrive at that conclusion?
Since there was nothing in the zoning ordinance, so what I did was, I actually went through the building codes, specifically sections dealing with occupancy loads, which deals with people. And I won't go through all of it, but there's a table, and it's the table called Maximum Floor Area Allowance Per Occupant, and it's table ten zero four five, and this table is part of section fourteen B dash ten dash one oh four, and it's titled occupancy loads. And so what I did is, there are, there are three issues here. The first one is, there's a section of the code specifically dealing with the table itself, and they, they talk about daycare. I understand it's for children, I'm not even going there. They have, they have one, they have one for children under the age of two, so you, you need fifty-five square feet. And then there's another, there's another quote in that same box, talks about all others, that deals with net of thirty-five square. And so that's, that's how it came to, to one. Then there's another one that's close to this, it's called an exercise room, and it's just an open, if, an open area. So if you take that, that's a, that's fifty square feet.
And we have about approximately twelve hundred square feet, uh, of, uh, area indoors?
Twelve hundred and one, you know, based on, off taking all the interiors, yes, that's, that's approximately correct.
And then you also, uh, since there was nothing of record to guide you on this, you also did some private investigation. Could you share with the board that investigation?
Well, uh, what I did is, I went out approximately a mi- a mile and a half in the diameter around the site. It's probably a little bit further, and I found five operating, I, kennels, that's the only way you can say it. And if you want me to go through the addresses and the names of the places and the neighborhoods they're in and the zoning, I'll be happy to do that, because I, I have it present.
Mr. Chairman, would you like us to detail each of the spaces, or just sum up what he found at, at the, each of the sites?
I'd say sum up, and can you repeat, what is the square footage of, um, the building versus the usable space for dogs?
Okay, okay. Can I?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the way the zoning ordinance would, would determine the square footage of the building at grade is outside wall to outside walls, okay? That's one thousand three hundred and forty square feet.
Okay, well, how, how big, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I, I'll be happy to answer.
Just how big when you subtract then any loading, unloading, drop-off area?
Ground floor commercial site is approximately fourteen hundred thirty feet.
Well, no, it's one thousand four hundred thirty square feet today. That's outside wall to outside wall.
Outside wall, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's how, that's how the zoning ordinance calculates it. So, there's, there's a, there was another section dealing with parking, and I don't want to, I, I, an issue came up before, and that code section is, it, it's, I got so many notes here, I'm sorry. Um, it was section seventeen ten oh two oh seven K, and what it, it, what it mentioned was, and this is the reason that we, I had to go through all these calculations, so I'm sorry, but, I went through them, so you're gonna get them all. And so, under K, in a, in a B one through, B one, one through dash three, it's, you require two parking spaces for every one thousand square feet, not including space used for animal pens or other non-public areas. So that's the reason the architect provided you a, an exhibit showing that the, the, the interior area was two, one thousand two hundred and one square feet, which, which meant that was, that's essentially the interior area. Now, for purposes of parking, and that's, don't, I'm just trying to, not trying to be rude, it came out, it came down to less than nine hundred and twenty-six square feet, if I just take that number. And so it required no additional parking, so all the calculations I made on the, on the, the net area is based on the interior space.
And that is one thousand two hundred and one feet.
Correct.
And when you visited these other sites, could you tell the board approximately what the size they were, and how many dogs you saw were in there, when you talked to the people who ran these, these various, uh, daycare centers?
Well, they were similar in size, because they're, you, they're all one-story, most of them are one-story buildings. Most of them were brick, and I think there was one frame structure, and the interiors probably were between the same thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred, might be one was sixteen hundred square feet, but similar in size and, and layout.
And how many dogs did they particularly have in any day when you were there?
Well, most of the, most of the dogs that, when I walked, they were in there, were in that, say, twenty-eight to thirty-five at any given time, the days I were there. There could be less, there could be more, I don't know.
Based on the, the department's recommendation, we have twelve hundred and one square feet of area. That means every dog would have one hundred and twenty square feet, is that pretty much the calculation?
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, twelve hundred square feet by, divided in the-
By ten, it comes out to a hundred and twenty square feet per dog. The other, uh, sites that you saw, uh, are providing approximately thirty to thirty-five feet per dog, which would equate to approximately thirty-five to forty dogs in a twelve hundred square foot space.
Well, what I, I, what I, I'll tell you what I told you, I found anywhere, the mean to me was about thirty dogs, okay? And I, I took it even one step closer, because I took my dog down to a, a place that's called the pups, pup pet club, and it's at eight twenty-eight eleven North Lincoln Avenue, it's in Lakeview. And I know the operator of the facility, and he's a very good man, and he loves dogs. And when I talked to him and we went through, you know, like, in that building, he is, his space is pretty similar. It's about thirteen hundred square feet, and at the time, in the morning, there were thirty-seven dogs in there, small, medium, and large. And this is a very nice facility, and that's the reason I bring the dog there, because there's a grooming station, and I can get the dog's food and all that kind of stuff. And so when I worked that number out, it, depending upon how you're gonna work it, it still comes out to, if you had twenty-five dogs in there, you would be able, you would have, you would have forty-eight square feet, plus or minus, it's some fraction there. If you had thirty-five dogs, that would be thirty-five square feet for a dog. And let me, let me, this is the last thing, I promise I will talk, I won't talk about, and under this, under the same building code requirement, for residential uses generally, the code requirement for exiting for a, for a resident or for a person is one hundred and twenty-five square feet per, per facility.
I have no further questions. Um, prepared to answer any questions from the board.
Yeah, yeah, the most helpful thing too, because we've gotten a lot of facts on this, and I, it's helpful, so appreciate it. But I think to streamline and go, um, to the department, Steve Loanziano's on the line, and, um, you know, maybe this isn't a normal thing the board does, negotiating numbers of dogs, so if we-
We understand.
Their perspective on the recommendation, try to find a solution. So Steve, are you there? Let's see if Steve is, um, yep, okay, there we go, he's unmuted. Hey, Steve.
Whoop, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so the department does not dispute any of the, we believe that the use meets the criteria uh, for a special use. We're not disputing the exiting or the parking or anything else for this use. What the ordinance does say is that if, um, there seems to be an, an impact, greater, uh, impact based on the, uh, uh, approval of the special use, then there needs to be a condition placed on it. So what, what the department has done is looked to best practices, and we've looked at the Animal Cruelty Society, uh, and their, uh, recommendations for play areas and kenneling areas for dogs. And those are for small dogs, seventy square feet, uh, per dog, and for large dogs, a hundred square feet per dog. So I think we just took the average of that at eighty-five square feet and divided the space that was available for the dogs. and divided the space that was available for the dogs and came up with our numbers. Comparing it to daycares and, and other uses, I, I don't see the equivalency there. The, uh, the floor plan shows a, an area for older dogs, small dogs and large dogs, which is much smaller than the fourteen or thirteen or twelve hundred square feet that has been, you know, said, said to exist in this site. There's also bathrooms and it looks like maybe utility rooms and other things involved. So the area may be much smaller, but what we did was we, we went to the floor plans and that are uploaded along with the building permit. And we measured out the areas and we divided that by the best standards that are provided, that we found through the Animal Cruelty Society for the keeping of dogs. And that's how we came up with the numbers that we, that we have, that we're recommending. So again, those are best practices. There's nothing in the building code. There's nothing in the licensing code. But that doesn't mean that we should just allow seven hundred dogs in here either. I mean,
Good question. One question, one question. Um, so Steve, how did you distinguish between the number of dogs overnight and the number of dogs during the day?
Well, overnight, we looked at the, we assumed that the area that the dogs would stay in are the dog, are the areas on their floor plan that are marked older dog, small dog, large dog, which appears to be in a stairwell. And then the four kennel, it appears to be four kennels adjacent to the doggy play area. So we took those areas and we divided those up by what would be needed to have kennels and room for an employee to actually move in those areas to put the dogs in and out of the kennels. I, I, I would, I would imagine that's how it would work. I don't think they'll just open the doors and let the dogs in and out.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that's helpful. Um, so councillor, um, I wanna, I wanna get your response to that. And I don't want it to go on too long, but I'm interested.
Well, it won't. We, we did submit, unfortunately, it was late in the game. We really first found out that the issue of, of the amount of dogs was last month. Uh, my client went to a veterinarian who not only operates in dogs, but also runs daycare center. We submitted that to you, but I believe it was, it was late. Uh, and in her testimony, in her letter to you, it indicated she thought that twenty feet per dog would be adequate. And even at thirty-five, we're looking at seven by five feet per dog. I, I think we're all trying to, trying to come up with a standard because there is not one that's set by any regulator, regulating body. What makes sense? Does a hundred feet per dog, a hundred and twenty feet per dog make sense? It seems to me to be a big space for a dog. We have a dog and that dog sleeps most of the time. I don't think it needs a hundred and twenty feet. And most of the dogs play in that play area. So, and I know what you've mentioned is determined, that is, you know, we're gonna be negotiating on how many dogs, but a hundred and twenty feet per dog, certainly twenty, is there a position in between? As Mr. Wasnicki said, he went to five or six of these daycare centers and they all were about thirty to thirty-five feet per dog. And we're trying to come up with a number. And clearly, as you saw from the economic analysis there, you can't, you cannot have a business with ten dogs or twenty dogs and meet the criteria because there is a criterion of that is three, two or three full-time employees for those dogs. And it's, it's impossible. So you've, you've got a number of daycare areas who are all in the approximately fourteen hundred square feet. If, if you were going to use the hundred and twenty feet, you would have to have forty dogs, you'd have to have four thousand, forty-eight hundred square feet of space. It, it just doesn't, there's not that many out there.
Let me quick though to Nancy, because her hand is up.
Hi, thank you. This is Nancy Resavich.
Sworn in. You've been up today, so will you please state your name and address?
Nancy Resavich, Assistant Commissioner for the Department of Community and Economic Development Zoning Bureau. Do you need my address as well?
Uh, no, it's okay with the zoning bureau. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, and first, if I can, thank them for responding to some of the other issues we had raised, adding the fencing and those types of things. Those, those were big concerns to make sure because if you look at the, the property, the big concern with us is this is a long, narrow property. There's a lot of residences here. So, so, you know, I just really wanted to mention that, that they, they did respond to a lot of the other concerns. I do wanna also mention though, I, I wish we had some of this data sent to us so that we could actually look at it. One of our regional planners, James Harris, had actually done a little analysis, spot checks on his own. And he found facilities at, you know, six four hundred North Milwaukee. I think there was another one. Yeah, I can't remember the address of the other one. Trying to pull this up really quickly. But those were, those were, you know, about sixty square feet. As Steve had said, what we built our recommendation on was what we found for the Animal Cruelty Society and the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, A S P C A. Um, and that's where we came up with the seventy-five to hundred square feet. And then the other thing, I just wanna make sure that, that we reference is back to the kenneling. I think as Steve had mentioned, there was four kennels shown on the plans. At some point, I thought the applicant said they had twelve cages, but they were also seeking more dogs than cages. So, you know, there's a lot of concern about, you know, making sure that this doesn't end up being, you know, kind of a nuisance because of there being too many animals there. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So I'm trying to brainstorm ways to approach this. Because I don't necessarily know that an appropriate result is us taking our, your, our findings just from this conversation today and doing our own math and picking a number. I just think that's outside of what we do as a board. So I wanna give the option now of a continuance to figure this out. Any thoughts on that?
Well, the one, the one thing that I certainly would, and I certainly have to talk to my client about it because the veterinarian that we have that we, when we spoke to her and she sent her letter in, she does, like I said, she's operations on animals. She also has a daycare center. And I wanna say there is a difference between a kennel and the Anti-Cruelty Society. But yes, I, I, I mean, I would recommend, I'd like, I would like to get her in because I think she adds credibility to our case. She couldn't do, couldn't be here today because she was doing surgery. And I think that would be a kind of a, a, a person that we would be talking to as opposed to coming off of a website from the Anti-Cruelty Society.
Yeah, it might, it might be productive too for the witness to talk to the department. I'm sure you're alluding to that already, but, Nancy or Steve, do you have any issues with that result?
No, Chairman.
Yep.
This is Steve. I, I would be happy to have a sit down with the applicant and their expert. That's kinda one of the things we've been asking for. And if we could get a one-month continuance, I think we could wrap this up. Like I said, other than the number of animals being held here or being using the facility, we think that it meets all the other criteria of the ordinance. So we know it does, so.
Okay, good. I think we, I think we can wrap it up with a one-month continuance here. I'm like, I'm doing math on my notepad about how many dogs and how big the dogs are. And it just would be better if that didn't exist. So next month, I think hopefully we just come to a resolution and, and can streamline this pretty quickly. And so
I think one thing, Chairman Steve, you've always been very cooperative. I'm assuming you would agree to a Zoom meeting with the doctor that we have, the veterinarian we have?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the sooner the better, Paul. I'd be willing to wrap it up as quick as we could.
I absolutely agree.
But I, but we do need some accurate numbers for those areas that are labeled as older dogs, small dogs, large dogs, play area and the kenneling area. I mean, cause like I said, I, I had to go into the project docs and, you know, calibrate those myself. So if we can get those accurate counts, then I think we can resolve this quickly.
Great, okay, perfect.
Could we also get, I'm sorry Chairman, could we also get their, the document or the data that they presented today?
Yeah, yeah, and feel free to talk about all of this, all of this offline. But what we're gonna ask is that the Zoom meeting happens and that the vet expert shows. So with that, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, sounds like we'll be seeing you all again. So thanks everyone for your time on this.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everybody be well, be safe.
You too. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving along and get our pace back. So calendar number four thirty-seven dash twenty dash S and four thirty-eight dash twenty dash Z. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. Sorry, everyone, one second, trying to find it.
Was that withdrawn? Maybe my notes are.
Wait, yeah, no, maybe I missed this in the notes because I don't see the recommendation. Sorry, everybody. Good, so just to confirm, because, because my notes clearly aren't confirming both of four thirty-seven dash twenty dash S and four thirty dash twenty dash Z were withdrawn. I'm getting, yep, I'm getting confirmation of that. Okay, great. Thanks, Julie. Okay, so we're moving to sixty dash twenty-one dash Z, which is real vet west loop at four fifty-one dash fifty-seven North Elizabeth Street. Counselor Fatigus, when you're on, let me know.
I am, I am on, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, one second, it looks like, um, it looks like there's a hand up. Oops. Can, can someone please promote John Perisic? Cameron, did you say John?
Yes, um, I believe it's John.
Perisic? John Pekarski, sorry, there was another John with their hand up.
I'm John Perisic, you taken my question?
Sure, yeah, John, what is your question? And, and can you identify yourself?
John Perisic, twenty-six twenty-three North Washington in Chicago. I believe I heard you say that sixty-eight dash twenty-one dash Z and sixty-nine twenty-one dash C are continued until June?
Yes, that's correct. We, we continue those matters until June.
Well, you know, I've been on the call for almost ten hours today and I think somebody's aware that I was, you know, on the call for these items. So my request would be that this be the last continuance. They were on the schedule for February. It was continued to April. I don't know if you can tell me the reason for the continuance, but it's slightly aggravating to wait all day owing to find out that the applicant apparently requested a continuance sometime hours ago.
Yeah, so, and, and I do appreciate that, but we did announce it on the call. Um, I made a note to, to double announce that anyone listening in for that matter should, should drop.
What time was that? I heard it like an hour ago.
Okay, so, so maybe it was an hour ago. Things move a lot on this board, John. And so it's gonna be continued until June. Um, and we can't address that, another continuance now. But, um, you know, apologize for, for what happened, but this is notice and we've gotta keep moving on, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, sorry, Counselor, give me a second. Okay, Nick, let's move forward here. Everything's been addressed. So if we can move forward with, you're here for sixty dash twenty-one dash Z?
The four fifty-one, four fifty-seven North Elizabeth. As Alderman Burnett alluded to earlier today, the owner of their property and the representatives of the neighbors of River West have come up with an agreement that we believe addresses the primary concerns raised with the proposed uses of the property. Um, I believe John Baska or Sam Wurterina are on. I don't wanna speak for them, but I, I, we do have, I believe we have an agreement. Um, and I wanna make sure that they have an opportunity, hopefully to withdraw their objections so that I can streamline my presentation. If not, I'll follow your lead in terms of the scope of our, our presentation.
Yeah, let's address that because the Alderman did speak on this earlier about all the compromise that's gone on. So maybe, does it make sense to you, Counselor, if I get whoever's here as an objector, maybe a lead for them to?
Like I said, I think, I think John Baska is the lead. And if maybe, if I could ask that he be called first and anybody else who wants to speak, maybe follow, follow John's lead.
Okay, good, um, perfect. So, um, John, are you present?
I'm here, yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Can you please state your name and address?
Sure, John Baska, five oh nine North Racine, six oh six four two.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Appreciate it. Okay, John, so give us the download of what's going on from your perspective.
Sure, so we first began working with the applicant back in November of twenty nineteen. The plan went from a zoning change to where we are today, which is, it went from a C one five zoning change. And now we're at a place where the applicant is asking for a two-story building with setbacks. And that's why they're in front of you now. So there's been a long negotiation. I think we just heard a lot of the issues from the previous, from Mr. Colepack, from Paul and Mr. Wasnicki in regards to some of the unknowns in regards to doggy daycares. So there's been a lot of give and take back and forth. The applicant has changed what they were initially doing. We learned of this last Friday. And, and that was, we learned it Friday on the ninth. And so the opposition in response to all that continued over the weekend and we all signed up on Monday. During the week, we were able to begin discussions and have a number of, of workouts with the applicant as well as with workouts with the applicant as well as with Nick. And and within hours of us speaking and meeting right now, we've been able to come to a memorandum of understanding, which I I I know is a private agreement. However, in order for neighbors to support that, we needed to have an understanding as to what that operation would be. And so so that's where we're at right now. We have a operational memo of understanding of what how that's going to operate. And so the plans that we have in front of us are what we support. But here's what I'd like to do with respect to Nick and the applicant and those people who are on here. If you don't mind, I'd like to at least let Nick present so that all the neighbors here, all the things that have been going on, allow him to do that. And as long as those are consistent with everything that's been presented. If if it matches up, then we will withdraw. Neighbors of River West will withdraw the opposition and support the project per what was and what's being presented as well as the memo of understanding. Also, I want to make quick note that neighbors of River West, we do not, for lack of a better word, supersede, I almost said Trump, but we don't supersede those people who still object and and have comments and thoughts, but we think that we're at a pretty good position here to be able to coexist with this applicant.
Okay, so I think the, we will go back to Nick. I would say in exchange, we ask that no objectors who choose to speak are only venting things that they're concerned about. We need specific objections that aren't repetitive. But with that, John, we can definitely note that this is a potential approval is contingent upon the memorandum of understanding being tied. I view it as a bit of a side letter, and trust me, we appreciate when the community groups and the applicants figure things out outside of our body, because as you see, we hear a lot of things in one day. And things are much better done when it's it's between the parties actually that are involved. So thank you to all for the work. And with that, Nick, go ahead and and put on.
You again, Nick Fatikas from the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm here in behalf of the applicant Real Vet West Loop LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at four fifty one through four fifty seven North Elizabeth Street. The subject property consists of a single zoning lot that measures ninety six feet wide by only a hundred feet deep. The subject property property had formerly been improved with a one-story warehouse building and and an off-street parking lot. The applicant has since taken down the the warehouse building and is proposing to redevelop the property with a new two-story vet veterinary and animal care facility. The proposed building will be supported by sixteen off-street parking spaces. Although the proposed veterinary office and off-street parking configuration are otherwise permitted by code, the subject property, which again is located in an M two dash two zoning district, abuts a residential RT four zoning district to the south and east. And that's an issue in this case because the abutting residential district imposes setback requirements on the subject lot that are not otherwise applicable to M two dash two zoning districts. The and Mr. Chairman, our findings of facts, the middle included a zoning map that highlighted the zoning districts all in the immediate area. A number of exhibits also provided aerial views of this subject area to compare that with the zoning map of the for the existing building conditions. So in order to permit the proposed building, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the front setback from the required twelve feet to zero and to reduce the rear setback from the required thirty feet to twelve feet. I have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Joseph Wallen and our project architect, Mr. Michael Mathias. And Mr. Chairman, again, as you've heard, our team has had regular contact with the alderman and representatives of the local community. After the case was continued last month, the proposed dog daycare operator backed out of the project. And that really forced Dr. Joe to reconcept the building for the property. So we've made some pretty significant scale back changes to the plan set, and those were reflected in the plans that were sent both to the neighbors of River West, to Alderman Burnett's office, and of course, the zoning board as recently as yesterday. What we've done is we've reduced the height of the building from a three-story building to a two-story building. Again, we didn't need that additional space to accommodate the dog daycare component. It's a non-issue. It's moot in this point. We also removed the basement because, again, it was added space that was unnecessary. So the proposed floor area total for the building went from about twenty eight thousand square feet to only twelve thousand six hundred and sixty eight square feet. We also worked with Sam and John's group, as well as one of the immediate neighbors, to relocate our trash enclosure away from the originally proposed location so that there was less of a potential conflict with our residential neighbor's garage. And then, as we've alluded to again in the memorandum of understanding, we've made a number of commitments to better describe the veterinary office's regular operations. Again, while this is a variation case based on hardship, we it was an opportunity for the neighborhood organization to have a better understanding of our operation. And again, in our way, make commitments for for being able to work together in the future. The program that was originally proposed had alley access. Prior to last month's hearing, we had removed alley access, and based on our new commitment, we're proposing alley egress only. And that was a significant change that, again, we we negotiated with the neighbors of of River West. We've also identified hours of operation, regular practices for cleaning the immediate area of any kind of dog instrument. We also even have scheduled service and pickups so that we minimize our impact on any of our residential neighbors, specifically those right behind the property to the east. So with that, I'd like to call Dr. Joe, our applicant and property owner, to to ask him questions about the operation. I believe we could rely in significant part on the findings of facts, but again, I want to make sure that we get him out of the record. And then I'll intend to call Mike, our project architect, to speak to the practical hardship, and then we can answer questions from there. So, Dr. Joe, if you're still with us, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Joe Waylon, you need address as well for that fourteen thirty one North Mohawk, Chicago.
Great, thanks, Dr. Waylon. And do you swear to affirm, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And, Dr. Joe, again, you're a licensed vet practicing in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
You have twenty nine years of work experience, and you currently maintain thirteen veterinary practices in and around the Chicagoland area. Is that right?
Yes.
You're the managing member of the applicant Real Vet West Loop LLC?
Yes, I am.
And again, that entity owns the subject property at four fifty one North Elizabeth Street. Is that right?
That's right.
Again, it's a ninety six by a hundred-foot deep lot?
Yes.
And it's located in an M two dash two zoning district. Is that right?
Correct.
And again, your plan is to develop the property with a two-story veterinary office and animal care building. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's our understanding, it's actually been confirmed by the Department of Planning and Development, that the proposed uses are allowed uses in the M two dash two zoning district. Is that right?
Yes, they are.
And, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we did submit with our findings of fact, a letter signed by Patrick Murphy, the zoning commissioner or zoning administrator, confirming that the proposed uses were were allowed uses in the M two zoning district. Dr. Joe, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify with that testimony, to be consistent with the statements we provided?
Absolutely.
And, Dr. Joe, finally, is it true that you authorized me to execute the memorandum of understanding to to finalize our commitments with the neighbors of River West?
Yes, I did.
Thank you very much. Michael, are are you on?
Yes, I am.
Michael, you're, I'm sorry, Chairman, if you could swear him in.
Michael, can you please state your name and address?
Yeah, Michael Mathis, eight one four Sterling Avenue, Fosmore, Illinois.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great.
Michael, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
This is the first time you're appearing before this zoning board, but you have appeared in front of other zoning and appearance boards throughout the state of Illinois. Is that right?
Yes.
And Chairman, we did submit a copy of Michael's CV and a copy of his license, as well as his self-certification to establish Mike as a as a witness, I'm sorry, professional witness.
Yep, yeah, we recognize that. Thanks.
And, Michael, you designed the building program for the proposed veterinary office?
Yes, I did.
And it's your professional opinion that the subject lots substandard depth dimension, again, only a hundred feet, together with the abutting RT four zoning district, create the particular hardships or practical difficulties specifically in this case? Is that right?
Yes.
And again, the front and rear setbacks that are being applied to our property are not generally applicable to other M two dash two zone lots. Is that right?
That's correct.
Because of those unique conditions, we're here requesting variations to reduce the front setback to zero and the rear setback to twelve feet. Is that right?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the proposed setbacks are consistent and compatible with the neighboring buildings in the immediate area. Is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
And in in maybe condensing your testimony, you prepared exhibits showing both the front setbacks located along North Elizabeth Street. Is that right?
Yes.
And the aerial photos also represent or show the rear setbacks for our neighboring buildings. Is that right?
Yes.
And in almost every case, the front setback is either at zero or a minimal dimension. Is that right?
Yes.
And in most of the cases, most of the properties just north of ours also zoned M two dash two. The buildings encroach all the way to the rear setback. Is that right?
Yes.
So our and and that actually includes the building that we would be replacing at the subject property, which until it was demolished last summer, extended all the way to the rear setback. Is that right?
Correct.
So arguably, the proposal is actually an improvement on the setback rear setback condition at the subject property. Is that sure?
Yes.
I'm just gonna try. And again, in the end, it's your professional opinion that the proposed development now scaled back to a two-story structure is remains consistent and compatible with the surrounding land uses. Is that right?
Yes.
Michael, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any other questions you have about the program for the building or the other commitments made to the the immediate neighbors.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Any questions from the board before we we go back to the objectors for a second? Okay, great. So we'll circle back to you all at the end, Nick, for a quick closing. Hopefully, so, John, do you want to take lead again?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you're sworn in.
Yes. Okay, so so based on Nick's presentation and the the witnesses and also the reference that was made to the memorandum of understanding that stated today, the plans that are dated as the fourteenth of April, we neighbors of River West will withdraw the objection and at this time. And and just just a footnote to that. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the board for allowing us to work through this. It's been a long road, but it's it it's a it was a it was a quite the negotiation as we went through this, but thank you for allowing us to work through that and give us the time, the continuances. I know Alderman Burnett's not on the on the zoom right now, but we appreciate working with him over time and allowing us to work through this. Lastly, I'll just say this about Nick and also two about Paul Kopeck, who was on this earlier. Both of them were professional. Nick was great to work with, even in the late hours and all the rest. So so we've done what we can. We've, I think that we've got the best outcome that we could possibly get at this point. And again, thank you for allowing us to work through this process. In my mind, it worked. Thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, very glad that you all were able to have those conversations and and find a resolution, a prospective resolution. But is anyone else objecting to this outside of the River West group? I just want to make sure we don't miss anybody that's not involved with 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 John's group.
I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, so who's speaking?
This is Michelle Strasberg, the owner of twelve twenty eight and twelve thirty West Hubbard, directly adjacent to this proposed new property.
Great, let me swear you in quick. Please, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Michelle Strasberg, twelve thirty West Hubbard, Chicago, six oh six four two.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, perfect. You can you can carry on, Ms. Strasberg.
Um, yeah, I I'm in agreement with John. We've been working on this since last November. I've been a resident here since, you know, nineteen ninety three. I've known the aldermen and done zoning changes. And yeah, it was a long road, but I'm glad we're at. The only concern I have is that when I look at the plans, they still show an exterior parking spot on the twelve-foot setback when all the parking spaces were to be enclosed on that first floor. And I don't know whether it was a drawing mistake because it's adjacent to the new electronic or what a security gate that they've added on that rear alley access. I mean, egress. See on all the plan, when you look at the floor plans, like right there, they show a parking spot outside the building in the twelve-foot setback.
Yes, I can. So the plan before included that parking spot out there, where we were requested as part of the negotiation to secure the parking lot from the alley so that in the evenings it could be shut. And our best resolution for that was to do it in line with the building at the twelve-foot setback. But we still we still had the one parking spot that's outside of that, that's 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 in the twelve-foot setback.
Yeah, I would kind of object to that. I mean, I was told that there was all the parking was contained within the building. And I know that you needed sixteen parking spaces when the square footage was almost double. But, you know, with the square footage that you have now, you 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 just need over half of those parking spaces. So and then there's these two one-foot wall structures jutting out to the zero lot line that are one foot thick. I don't know what those are. How are those identified?
Oh, I'm I'm not sure what you're speaking of. We do have the trash enclosure that goes, but there is no.
Yeah, on this page that's shown right now, adjacent to the trash enclosure is one one-foot dimension. And then there's the egress to the alley, and then just to the right of that exterior parking spot, which I thought was a was a misdraw. There is another one-foot structure.
It's a dimension line, so it's just an extension of that dimension line going to the to the structure.
Oh, so the posts that are on either side. All right, yeah, I mean, the, you know, I was an objection to the egress forever. I'm, you know, I I'm happy that it's all within the twelve-foot setback, but the only thing I'm objecting to. But the only thing I'm object, objecting to right now is that parking space that's outside in that 12-foot setback.
Okay.
And there's going to be some kind of gate going back and forth. Who would park their car next to a gate? And you know, it's kind of in a blind spot if somebody's egressing into the alley and then somebody else is backing out of that parking spot.
If I could just, if I could briefly respond to it. Yep. I just want to, for the purposes of clarifying the record, the parking space that's being discussed right now, is it located in the lot's rear setback? There's no relief related to that parking space. That's a permitted location for parking. I just want to make sure that's clear for the record, that are, whether the zoning variations are approved, the parking space is not an issue before the board, simply for the record.
Right, but in the MOU, there was the understanding that all the parking was going to be contained within the building past the 12-foot setback. So I am just objecting to that parking spot that is in the 12-foot setback, which is not needed because you have ample amount of parking for the square footage of the building. I think it's a safety, I mean, I think it's a safety, I think it's a safety hazard. I mean, you know, it's, you know, whatever that wall is where that gate is that's going back and forth and somebody's parking there, the driver's side is against the gate side. I mean, it is a hazard. It's a health hazard. It's a safety hazard.
And I think we hear, we do hear your objection. So unless there's anything new, I think we've got to move on because there are more objectors.
Okay.
But we will take this under consideration.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for considering.
Yeah, so I see Jennifer, Jennifer Ruman, and sorry if I'm cutting off your last name. It's cutting off on the screen for me with your hand raised. Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Jennifer Ruman, 1224 West Hubbard, unit number 260642.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Man.
I just want to, if I may, state that I affirm that I was not aware of this setback being utilized for a parking space. And I think this is a matter that requires further discussion. It impacts my property and my neighbors as well. And perhaps this was just a matter that we overlooked as we were seeking to get this across the finish line. So I share Michelle Strasberg's concerns as to that space. And I don't know where we go from here. I would defer to you.
Great. So, and just so we, we repeat how we do this, because we do get a lot of names in some of these lists. For everyone else, raise their hands up. We won't be hearing repeat objections because we heard it the first time. Not a strength in numbers thing. I personally just know there's a lot of people out there we're not hearing from. So it's the substance of the objection. So thank you. And I'm going to move on from that. So any other objectors with anything substantively different? Okay, Nick, I'm going to divert back for, to you for a fairly streamlined closing because we've got a lot on this.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, the relief request today is not reuse-related. It's for the variations to permit the building situated on the lot. It's a unique lot where the only M2-2 zoning district that abuts residential zoning that enforces or imposes an additional setback requirement than what is typically applied to an M2 lot. On top of it, we have 100-foot depth. So the requested variations are specifically tied to a lot hardship. And as you heard from our project architect, the resulting building will remain consistent and compatible with the streetscape and the footprints of the neighboring structures. If, again, any other questions, we'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, we'd rest our case.
Great. Any additional questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration. And I do want to end with another thank you, everyone, for doing some compromising behind the scenes. Thank you to Alderman Burnett, who I know is also always a great broker of those conversations. So we'll take this under consideration. Thank you. Yep, thank you. With that, I know we're getting close to the end, but I've got to give a quick break because we've been going at this for quite a while. So I'm going to call a 10-minute recess. We're going to come back at a minute after 7:50, 7:51. From the board, Commissioner Toyah Seconds, Commissioner Saul. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Great. We'll reconvene at 7:51. Thanks.